Good evening and welcome to the Special Commission Meeting for January 2, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now if we would please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Commissioner Toth?
Here.
Commissioner Crable?
Here.
Commissioner Minin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Mayor Doctor?
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, we are here tonight to have a discussion and some action items with the public comment as part of the discussion. So I'm going to start with C1, Discussion on Substantial Damage.
Thank you, Mayor Doctor and Commissioners. Earlier this week, we had a commission member that approached city staff and asked to have a special meeting because there's been some issues that have been brought up to your attention having to do with substantial damage determinations. On December 17, the City Commission voted 4-0 to go with Option 2 for substanti-- excuse me, under the FEMA guidelines and under Option 2 to follow the FEMA guidelines. And what I think has happened is there's some unintended consequences that have occurred from taking that direction. So I had a commissioner approach me and ask if we could have a meeting to discuss substantial damage determination and substantial damage determination letters. And what I did was I asked Catherine Yonkin from the Community Development Department to come up with a little bit of a historical on where we've been and how we started with substantial damage from when we began. And she just put this stuff together today so just so she could brief the commission and talk to the commission and then let that evolve into a conversation among the commissioners.
All right, so are we going to actually go through a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So I wanted to just start out with what is substantial improvement and what is substantial damage? And this is as defined by the city's Flood Plane Code, Chapter 66, and the Florida Building Code. So since we're talking about substantial damage, that is damage of any origin sustained by a building or structure whereby the cost of restoring the building or structure to its before-damaged condition would equal or exceed 50% of the market value of the building or structure before the damage occurred. The city's flood plane management regulations require that a substantial damage determination be completed by the city in Section 66-103.4, which talks about substantial improvement and substantial damage determinations. And this applies to for applications for building permits. We are to compare the cost to perform the improvement, the cost to repair a damaged building to its pre-damaged condition, or the combined cost of improvements and repairs to the market value of the building. And then we are to determine and document whether the proposed work constitutes substantial improvement or repair of substantial damage and to notify the applicant. As discussed at previous City Commission hearings, there are two paths identified by FEMA in the FEMA P-758 Reference Book for Substantial Improvement, Substantial Damage. And the public has been calling these respectively Options 1 and Option 2. So the first option is to proactively inspect the building soon after the event and use available information to estimate repair costs and at market values. Those-- that data is then used to develop substantial damage determinations in advance of owners submitting applications. Or they can notify owners of the requirement to get permits and then wait for property owners to apply for permits and make substantial damage determinations at that time following their normal permit review procedures. On November 1, the commission held a meeting with the presentation by staff where staff explained that we had been following both Options 1 and 2 since opening to the public post Hurricane Milton. The commission then directed staff to continue with Option 1 that has been going on for those who wish to follow that path and for people who have submitted permits to use Option 2 to have a substantial damage determination without an inspection. And in a subsequent meeting of the commission on December 17, the commission voted to adopt Option 2 for permits and to direct staff to follow Option 2 and FEMA guidelines. In follow-up to the commission meeting on 12/17, on 12/20, the city received an email from Florida Division of Emergency Management expressing concern in regard to media reporting and asking to meet with us. Their quote was, "The linked article below has come to our office's attention today as it pertains to your substantial damage procedures. The information provided in the article is limited, so we would like to check in with you directly so we can better understand your current permitting process. As always, we just want to confirm that your process is compliant with the NFIP so that you have a successful recovery period and a more resilient community." In follow-up, staff met with them and we walked through a proposed process of Option 2 and were advised that the city needs to ensure that we verify the cost estimates versus the scope. This scope must ensure that the estimate contains all of the work necessary to return the building to a pre-damaged condition. The following day, we also received an email from FEMA noting that in follow-up to media reports, they would like to know if we have unmet needs. In follow-up to that email, staff met with FEMA and they noted that under Option 2, staff is required to verify that the scope includes all of the work to return a building to pre-damaged condition and to ensure that all available data is used to verify that scope. FEMA is also sending in a team next week for a general technical assistance visit and they haven't-- it's either probably going to be the 9th or the 10th. We don't have a firm date yet. But they would be meeting with staff to go through our process. In the guidebook FEMA P-758, it talks about determining the cost of improvements and cost of repairs. And the cost to repair includes the cost of all work necessary to restore a damaged building to its pre-damaged condition. Terms include the cost of all materials, labor, and other items necessary to perform the proposed work. The term substantial damage refers to the repairs of all damage sustained and cannot reflect a level of repairs that is less than the amount of the damage sustained. If an owner does not intend to repair the damaged building right away or if the owner cannot afford to make all the repairs immediately, the official should inspect the property to determine whether, based on estimates, the work required to restore it to its pre-damaged condition will constitute substantial damage. If this is the case, then the cost to repair is compared to the building's market value and the local official should provide written notice to the owner of that determination. So in following Option 2 in the FEMA guidelines, which was how staff was instructed to proceed and as laid out in FEMA P-758 and in follow-up to our conversations in the last two weeks with FDEM and FEMA, where we were reminded that it is the city's responsibility to ensure that all work to return a building to pre-damaged condition is included in a cost estimate. The way we've been doing this, this can be completed in one or multiple permits, but all costs to return the building to pre-damaged condition must be submitted. So I have an example that I use. There's one owner who owns multiple buildings and each building has multiple permits. And we don't have a problem with that. They're being processed. They're just being joined together for cost purpose, to make sure that it doesn't exceed the scope of work. And the owner, for instance, told me at the beginning, "Oh, I have everything but the HVAC. I'll have that, you know, soon." So we're, you know, we're looking for a complete cost when we do that. In regards to providing substantial damage letters, in FEMA P-758, it says, "After inspections are completed and the data evaluated and substantial damage determinations are made, owners should be provided letters with the result." Our city code also requires notification whenever somebody applies for a permit as to whether or not you are substantially damaged or substantially improved. So to sum that up, in order to meet our requirements for substantial damage, this left us with a couple of questions in follow-up to the last meeting, similar to the reasons that one of the commissioners asked for a subsequent meeting. We've heard that the community, there are people who want their letter that do not have a permit. So the last two things are questions for the commission to discuss. So the first question is, Option 2 makes a substantial damage determination after a permit is received. For those who do not wish to apply for a permit, upon request, should staff provide substantial damage determinations to these requesters even if they have not submitted a permit? The second question is, as you know, from November, we have still continued to receive information from Title Basin and we still continue to have letters that are here and ready to go. So as we continue to receive this info, should we send out these determinations even though they don't have a request for a letter or a permit in, in order to meet our notification requirements? And to give you kind of an idea of where we stand with that, to date, we have 969 letters that were sent prior to the 12/17 decision. We have 338 letters ready to send on 12/17 that are here. And we have today received 125 new sets of data to review and prepare the letters. So that's approximately 57% of the structures in the city have that information now. So that concludes my presentation and turn it back to the commission.
So Mayor and Commissioners, if I could, what had happened, I think, since the 17th of December? There'd been some emails and individuals who've come in when we've been open and asking for substantial damage determination letters. And I think under the guidance that we were given for Option 2, it always had to-- well, I won't say always, but in order to get a substantial damage determination, it was part of a permitting process. And there was individuals who were expressing desire to get the letters without having to submit a permit, whether they needed it for applying for ICC or for an insurance claim or for other matters. And they were asking for copies of the letters, but we weren't able to provide that information to them without the permit. So that kind of, with the information that we've received from those individuals and the inquiries we've gotten from Florida Department of Emergency Management and FEMA, you know, we wanted to bring this to the commission's attention and let there be a discussion about the substantial damage determination letters. But also, at the same time, being that FEMA just notified us that they're coming in for a technical visit, we wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay.
Can we ask questions of Community Development Director?
I would assume, correct, with staff? Yeah?
Yes.
Welcome back. A question for you. In the third from the last, you say, "In following Option 2 FEMA guidelines," and then continues on, "this work can be completed to one or more or multiple permits, but all costs." When must that be done?
So in order to issue the permits, so what we've been doing is what's called, I guess, Remain in Your Home program. So we've issued to date permits like electrical, HVAC, roof repairs that keep people in their home with a caveat in those permits that say, "This cost is going to be applied to your overall permit." So we are, if we're getting a permit in now that has all of the work that we've identified that would need to return the building, we just add all those permits together and that's good to go. If we have a permit for three things, we're missing two more, then we notify them that we need the cost for the other two.
Okay, and how do you identify what elements in a home need to be included?
So under FEMA guidance, we are to use all available information.
Means what?
So what the city has right now is our, what is called, initial damage assessment. That's the one that staff does. We did about 10 days after Helene and about another 10 days after Milton. We go out with actually a tape and measure the water lines. It's basically based on that survey data, insurance claims. And we now also have a third piece of the pie, which is the Title Basin inspections as well.
If the Title Basin inspections are done?
So the inspections for Title Basin are about, I don't have an exact number. I would say 98, 99% done. They're just not turned into data that's been sent to us. So we have an app that actually has all of the data in it. It's just not exported in a way that we can turn-- in a way that we can turn it into a letter.
Okay. The Title Basin folks go inside a home?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
And when they don't, how is the estimate?
So, once again, that estimate is probably based on visual data, it's going to be based on what they see on the outside of the home. That's why it's turned into what's called a substantial damage estimate. And that's why there's an appeal process and, you know, you have more information. I heard about somebody today that, we looked at theirs and most of the houses in Sunset sit about 4.0 in AVD. This house sits at 5.9. This house has three steps up to the front door, making that door floor probably 24 inches off the ground. So, it makes total sense that that person doesn't have the level of damage that the estimator estimated, you know? So, we take that information, it's an easy reassessment that that is not correct.
But you're still relying upon, and sometimes certainly not objective data, but you're relying on inferred data?
So, for the estimator tool, for the letters that are going out, which was under option one, that is based on that estimator tool data. And that is why there's a reassessment process built into that. But if we have a permit that goes with one of those assessments, we then evaluate that permit before that letter goes out. And that may change that determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any idea how many homes were, did have visits internally into the home?
From Title Basin?
Correct.
No, I do not know that.
So, we don't. So, it could be 80%, they just walked on by, and 20% where there was damage recorded. So, how do we try, how are we determining the information? Does it have the same value as it would in option two, where we're actually going into, the contractor has gone in and writes everything up?
No, that's what I said, is that the contract, if you've got a permit and you've got a contract, but we have, more than half the structures in the city don't have a permit application in. So, those are people that are waiting for substantial damage letters, I'm assuming, or they're in the process of getting a permit. I don't know why I don't have a permit from them, but I can tell you that permits are here, but total number of structures is 3,400 and something.
Title Basin, what, did we know at the time, when we first started out and we, as staff, had decided to go with option one?
No, staff never decided to go with option one. Staff did both from the beginning.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I could, with Title Basin, what had happened was the state had determined that they were going to hire a company called Title Basin to take care of doing the damage assessments on the ground. And they had offered that out to, I think it was 20 municipalities or 17 municipalities, of which 15 or 16 signed agreements with the state in order to have Title Basin to do the assessments. They needed to be done, they put people on the ground immediately and were able to have access to be able to do those assessments or those inspections. So, based upon discussions with FDM and their executive director, you know, and previous history on what had happened in other communities, we signed up to go with them.
Okay. Did we understand at that time how incomplete these assessments were actually going to be?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Ed, I would say that this is a FEMA-approved methodology that we're following, and that's a very important part.
Please, let's hold it down.
That's a very important part of what we do. We were told to follow a consistent methodology, not to change the methodology during the process. And this was help offered by the state to inspect every building in Treasure Island. So, we accepted it.
Okay. And you said that we're required, basically, to take all the information that we have when we do the substantial damage assessment or a determination?
When we do a determination, yes. We have to look, when we're doing permits, we're issuing permits, we need to look at all the available information.
And the only way to do that would be through the estimator, correct?
No. As I explained, we have four different sets of data. We have the estimator, we have the initial damage assessment, we have surveyed water lines, and we have insurance claims.
Okay.
So, we take all of that and sometimes we say, "Okay, this is not enough items." And sometimes we say, like the example I gave earlier, "They didn't have but an inch of water in their house." So, obviously, they don't need, you know, a full-scale renovation.
Chuck, I guess a question for you. If we had been noticed by FEMA that they're going to be doing, coming in and doing different investigation, has that been sent out, or is this the first that the commission's hearing about it?
We had just got notified from FEMA, what was it, Catherine, the 21st?
20th and the 21st.
20th or 21st, about then, that FEMA had asked, or said that they were interested in our process and procedure. They had seen messages on Earthsky Media coverage via newspaper and TV and wanted to know if we needed any help. And then they said that they were going to send a staff assistance visit.
Okay. Yeah, I would.
And actually, that was not the 21st, I know that Mary Ellen met with them, I believe, just this past week. Tuesday, Tuesday.
And I think FEMA, and maybe I'm getting that confused with FDM, but yeah, then it was just this week.
Okay. Personally, I would have hoped that we would have had more information if it was coming out from FEMA and from FDM, so.
And we did receive an email from, I think it was an email from FDM, they wanted to know if we needed any assistance. I think that's what one of the emails was, but we just got notified this week.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions for staff, but I'd like to add to the conversation. Are we going to take public comment first?
We'll take public comment first and then we'll, okay, so, all right, let's go ahead and do public comment. Is anyone in the audience, other than the folks that I have their cards, if you want to speak on that topic, would you please fill out one of the postcards and we'll go from there? But we'll start here with the ones I have in my hand, which is Mark Hoey.
Good evening. Mark Hoey, 225104th Avenue. Happy New Year. I really was here to make a shout-out to our people at the Pinellas County Appraisers Office, and I'll come back to that in just a second, in that I do want to put a question in your mind about these FEMA drive-by evaluations and the data that it produced. And it has been a month when that first letter went out under duress, that the gentleman got his letter, and I was fortunate enough to get a copy, as several others did, and found flawed data on that. So, one thing to keep in mind, whether they've all been done, half of them are done, 38% are done, whatever it is, unless we go back and validate that data, sending more of them out is not an answer, just to get them out the door to satisfy FEMA if the data's wrong. So, when you get your discussion on that. However, I did want to give a shout-out, a few weeks ago, basically back on December 18th at the Town Hall, Kevin Hayes from the Pinellas County Appraisers Office was here, spoke to us, and he brought forth a solution, at least from regards of the condo owners and homeowner associations regarding FEMA valuation. That's a different animal than the single-family structures, and it'd been a sticking point because what was defined was each condo would have to come up with an ACV, actual cash valuation, for the building alone, not the property, not the amenities, just the building. And very few had that. That's really not what insurance appraisals are about, they're about replacement costs and other value. So, anyway, that was a big deal. And we were struggling with that at the condo association I'm associated with. Kevin said that the county recognized that, that the numbers that were being pulled were non-adjusted from their database, non-adjusted valuations that were being pulled, some of it into this Title Basin database, by the way, and that Mike Twitty decided that they could do something about that. And they were actively working on coming up with what they would call an adjusted just value for every home, but most importantly was the condominium complexes. So, that was started, and in fact, it may be finished now, we just got ours today. You can get it online, but they've been flowing out. And at that time, and two days later, December 20th, the board members from our neighbor, Boca Seega Shores, of which my wife's on the board there, came and had a meeting with Catherine and Jackie Gabriel, and went over the process for condo permitting again, and brought that to bear of this just valuation determination by the county, and was told at the time that would be accepted in lieu of the ACV. That's huge, and that, we thank the accommodation there, because otherwise, just that one condo complex, a little one, only with 10 units, would have had to pay $2,500 to an appraiser to come up with an ACV, just for that purpose. It's a throwaway number, wouldn't be used for anything else. So, I just wanted to put that out, one is informational, and two, to make sure that all the condo association members in Treasure Island know that that's available. It's right on the front page of the PCOA website, don't have to chase it, it's right under the FEMA listing, and it's actually under the heading FEMA WLM Letter. And then you print out the letter for each one. It's still up to the homeowners association to make the determination of how that's split among the affected units. That was already known, that's easy to do with a little math. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Barb Adams?
Hi, I'm Barb Adams. I live on Isle of Palms. I'm also co-president for the Isle of Palms Civic Association. And as a resident and also as a realtor, a lot of my neighbors have been coming to me with questions. They want to know, "What do I do? Should I sell my house? Should I tear my house down? Should I elevate my house? Should I fix my house? Is it going to have any value if I keep it as a one-story? What is going to happen with insurance? I can't live in my house right now. What am I going to do? Where am I going to go?" And some of my, some of the stories that some of them have to tell, you need to hear about them. You need to hear about them. I have some neighbors on my street who have been involved in everything for decades in this community. They go to every event, they volunteer, they're Treasure Island Appreciation, everything. And then when their last pup died, they were the house that everybody in the neighborhood went by to get their dogs a treat, because they loved everybody's pups. Well, this storm traumatized them. The wife ended up in nursing care, the husband in a seedy hotel, their house had mold growing up the walls. They didn't take anything out of their house. When their house finally sold for pennies on the dollar, they were able to move, and they had three days together before she died in his arms. Okay? That's one neighbor. I have another one who is supporting four generations. Her mother with dementia, she's the only one with a job, her son and her granddaughter, they're living in a RV in front of their house. They can't get permits to get back into their house. She has tried to clear out their house, she fell and broke her leg in three places. And I know three people who have partners who have gone into dementia, because this has been so traumatizing for them. They don't know where they are anymore, they're saying, "Why can't I go home? What's happening?" And what do we tell these people? You know, I mean, it's not just about properties, it's about our neighbors and our residents, and they've been here for 30, 40 years. And they put all their money into their homes so that they could live here and retire here, and now their houses aren't worth anything, you know? And where do they go? I mean, how do they, I mean, it's, we need you to care about them. You know, they're, they are who our community is, they are us. They've been here since Treasure Island had dirt roads and no telephones. And they're old and they're thought, "Well, you know, they were going to die in their homes." And now they're dying in crappy hotels, or they're living off of a neighbor, or a friend, or a family member. It's, and, you know, they can't get, they're saying, "Well, why can't, can I just get permits? If I could just live in my house for two more years and die here, I'd be happy." And they can't. So, you guys need to think about, not only us who's here and can tell you what we're thinking, but about those who can't speak for themselves. Okay?
Hello. Came up tonight because I am continuously concerned about permit load. But I will say one thing, that homeowners have rights, and that we need to balance this. And if we're going through data, which is distorted, and if a certain percentage of data is distorted, then all of it has to be distorted. So, we need to take a look at that. And that's very scary for a lot of residents to be up against. And so, I really do want to mention that. I don't know what's going on with the permit situation, and I don't really understand, if I have a flood adjustment report from the NFPA, wouldn't that be a really good indicator of what the inside damage is? So, that is just one thing I want to say. But I do want to come back to a little bit of Carolyn homework today. So, I do want to come back to this permit load. So, I would love for us to be able to get a better, you know, kind of handle on how many permits are going out and what we're doing. As we're getting lost in this back and forth of months of this, what are we actually doing to get people back in their houses and get these permits moving? So, as of December 30th, we've had 1,553 applications submitted. We've had 540 of them issued. I do not know out of them if they're demolition permits, are they business permits, what kind of permits are there? So, could we maybe get a breakdown on that so we can get a better understanding? Any kind of good business, regardless, I've worked in government for years, in my department, we have to do projections, we have to forecast, so we can make sure we have enough staff to handle whatever this next load has come on. We also don't want to give departments unfunded mandates and tell them that we need to do so many per week and this and that, and they don't have the staff. So, we have to be realistic as we move forward. Now, oopsie daisy, hold on a second. So, after we take out the 540 from the 1553, we've got 1,013 that are pending under review, 88 that are ready to issue, I don't know exactly what that means, and 229 that need corrections. Giving us a total of 1,330 that are pending right now. As you just heard from the one manager, only 50% of the city has even put in permit applications. So, I don't know what is the average of getting permits done. So, is it normal to have 10 done a week? Is it normal to have 20 done a week? Is it normal to have 50 done a week? Because if we're getting 10 done a week at 1,330, we're looking now, we're going into close to two years. So, we need to get an honest assessment to tell people, too. You know, let them know, "We're not going to, you're not going to get a permit for eight months, you're going to have to figure it out." So, I really would love for us to do something constructive, that's solution-based, and make sure that we're assisting and really understanding how these permits are coming out and what can we do to get them out more. I do think the I do think this title basin thing is probably going to go south based on the distorted data. So then you can also come out to the residents and say, well, you need to come back. I mean, I personally had flood insurance, and it seems to me, whatever I got from the NFPA should work. That should be good determination. This person spent a day at my house, inspecting my house, not somebody walking by the street saying, okay, you got two feet of flood. And another thing about the homeowners and with the media, when you go on the media, all you see, and I really feel bad, there was definitely a percentage of the city that was totally hit horribly, and I feel terrible for those residents. But the majority of our homes had two feet of flood. We're looking for drywall permits, we're looking for basic outlet things, and we're sitting here going onto, into our fourth month, waiting just for that. So I want us all to get a look at that, and I want the media to understand that the reason why a lot of this is happening is because homeowners are still trying to fight for their home, because they only had two feet of flood, and it's not an expensive thing to fix. It's drywall. Will there be incidents where possibly there's worse electric or worse water damage? Possibly, but it's not that serious. And if you take a look at the neighborhood, you will see a lot of homes that are just waiting on that. And I'm with everybody, I just want to get a picture of what's going on, and to hopefully get a better idea of how many permits can go out. How much help does the city really need? This is a small city. They have staff of what, four, five, six people? What are we expecting them to accomplish? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Clark?
Chris Clark, District 2. Thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate it. So, you know, we keep hearing, we heard it multiple times tonight, about these substantial damage letters. And, you know, I think what I found is that there are serious, serious issues with the accuracy of these letters. I've been contacted by multiple residents in District 2 who got letters that just, frankly, make absolutely no sense. And a lot of times, these folks are elderly, and Ms. Junkin was up here before and said, you know, well, we don't have permits from people. Well, the reason you don't have permits from a lot of people is, a lot of people don't come to these meetings. They don't even know there is an option one or option two. They don't know what to do. They've heard they need to wait for some letter, and they get some letter that tells them they're substantially damaged, and they have no idea what to do. So they don't know that they need to, you know, submit a permit, they don't know what to do. So that's one reason why you haven't got a lot of permit applications, because there's just frankly, many people that don't know what to do. A lot of these individuals, to be honest, they feel helpless. You know, they're scared to death that the city is going to come take their home. I mean, we met one couple who didn't speak very good English. They won't answer their door, because they think it's the city coming to take their home from them. And we, I've gotten in contact with their daughter, and I'm trying to help them. But I mean, that's kind of what we're going through, a little bit like Barb said. You know, there's people that just don't have the capacity to deal with this and don't know what to do. So as always, I've had a lot of people reach out to me, I like to just go through specific examples, because I think it's good. And these people gave me permission to use their info, but Donna and George on Fifth Street, 1,600 square foot block home, AC still works, just needs drywall, baseboards, like everybody else. They got a substantial damage letter that said they were 98% damaged. So the house next door, identical home, pretty much, same square foot, they got a substantial letter that said 40%. So, I mean, there's no rhyme or reason to these letters, and we can still seem to put a lot of stock into them. So these folks are asking me, what do I do? Their 50% number is $55,000. They said they had a contractor give them an estimate of $40,000. So as far as I'm concerned, they should be able to submit a permit, you know, from their contractor with $40,000 worth of damage, their number's 55, they should be able to get a permit. Why are we putting all this stock in these letters? Another person on Sunshine Beach contacted us. They have to go up four steps to get into their house. They got absolutely no water in the home. They got a letter that said they're 58% damaged. I think, I think they said they had a commissioner come over, said that they were going to, you know, help them. I don't think they've heard anything. There still seems to be, don't really agree with option two. So I guess, you know, the other couple should be able to submit a permit, right? But what if someone that has no damage, what do they do? I mean, another house on Fifth Street, Crystal, I believe she's here tonight, I'm not sure she's going to get up and talk, but she has a four-foot crawl space, four steps up, got a letter, 57% damage. She has no damage. What does she do? I mean, I don't understand why, 97 days into this, we don't have some sort of flowchart that explains what you do in every single situation, that the residents could look at. That's why you have elderly people that have no clue what to do. And their kids can't even help them, because there's nothing to go by. So, you know, the biggest thing that my mom taught me as a kid was, is that actions speak louder than words. And I take that to heart, and, you know, I hear everyone up here, and I believe it to be true, but everyone says, you know, we want to get people back into their homes, we want to get people back into their homes. And again, I want to believe that, but the actions just, just aren't matching up with that. I mean, other than Mayor Doctor, who had to take the step of giving up his gavel just to try to go to option two, I mean, that doesn't give you the feeling that your city is really behind you. And, you know, I want to believe it, but the actions aren't there. We got to do something about these letters, and we got to help these elderly people that just don't know what to do.
Thank you, Chris. Wes Evans?
Wes Evans, Isle of Palms. I have a bunch of notes here, but I've done a bunch of scribbling on it, so it looks like inside of a subway tunnel at this point. So let me see if I can make sense of it. Just crazy, we're over 90 days in at this point, and we're back to talking about whether we need these substantial damage letters, what are we going to do with them? We warned you, the citizens have been standing up here for months, telling you that these letters are completely flawed, 100%, it's junk information put in, junk information coming out. The data that was put in, was put in by people that aren't qualified to even put the data in. Stoners hired off of Craigslist for a part-time job, given an iPad to walk by someone's house. They're putting in that people's houses are made of wood when they're blocked, they're putting in that it's a one-story home when it's a two-story home. It's flawed, 100%. I've stood in people's houses now, who've gotten ahold of me, wanted me to come by their house and see their substantial damage letter that says they're 80% damaged. I'm standing in their house, they need drywall. The only thing substantially damaged in the house at that point is actually the letter they're holding in their hand. That's it, that's the only thing. It's completely, it's junk. It's as good as it should have been put in the pile of drywall that was in the driveway two months ago. It's bizarre at this point. And it's just, I don't see how any logical person could even think that using these letters for anything is a good idea. Last time I checked, you know, we have people saying on the commission and the staff, that people are wanting these letters for insurance reasons. So we need to go back and we need to send these letters out, or whatever. But we know the letters are full of bad information, bad numbers. If I gave my insurance company, knowingly gave them bad numbers, that's called insurance fraud. I can't do that. You guys are encouraging people to take these letters, to give them to their insurance company. You should be telling people, hey, sorry, we messed up at the beginning. Throw the letter out, send a letter out that says disregard, it's complete garbage. Don't base anything on it at this point. If you want it, they can request it from the city, do with it what they may, but the city, don't encourage people to do that. That seems, I don't know, that's bad business. Oh, another thing with this, I'm sorry, it's just coming to me now. People have been coming in to get the information behind the substantial damage letters. They want to know what numbers were put into this, what numbers are put out that determine me 62% damage, or whatever it may be. And when they come in, someone in this building always tells them, well, we can't give you that information, because a printer's broken, or the computer's down, or the server's down. It's to the point where I talk to people, and I tell them, go in there and request the packet with the numbers in it, they're going to tell you that the printer's broken, but request it anyway, just so you know that you requested it. And sure enough, they come back and they tell me, they told me that the printer's broken. That's illegal, you're keeping information from people. I believe, I think I have it written here somewhere, that's Florida statute 119, says people, they can have the information, you can't hold it from them. It's just crazy that, over 90 days in, we're still going back and forth on these substantial damage letters that are garbage. People can get permits from their contractor-submitted estimates. It's a FEMA option for a reason, because it works. We have this threat of a FEMA audit. What's worse for an audit, to actual numbers that are used to rebuild a home, or made-up numbers out of nowhere that are complete garbage? It seems to me, one that's going to fail an audit are the ones that are complete garbage being put in. This is crazy. I want to thank you, Mayor, for standing up and going with option two, holding the feet to the fire of the commission and the staff, and I want you to remain unpenable. You're my man. Thank you.
Sarah?
All righty, hello, Sarah Pennington, Isle of Palms. Before I get to my main comment, I just wanted to respond, Ms. Junkin was up here talking, saying that we have been doing option one and option two at the same time from the beginning. And I thought that was strange, because I thought, then why are residents having to appeal option one? Couldn't they just move over to option two if we've been doing both at the same time? So I didn't quite understand that, it did not make sense to me. She also casually mentions, there's a reassessment process for all the bad substantial damage letters that are, I mean, obviously, people are coming forward. I get messages every day, people message me on Facebook about their substantial damage letters that are inaccurate. And Ms. Junkin casually mentions, oh, well, there's a reassessment process. And I'm thinking, well, what about these older people? They're alone in their home, they don't know what to do, they're not on Facebook, they don't come to these meetings, and they're supposed to just know about this reassessment process? In addition, why would you even put someone through a reassessment process when you are already admitting that the data is inaccurate? Why are we even doing that? It doesn't add up. Now, to my main point that I want to get to, which is, I have gotten countless messages from concerned residents, residents whose homes were wrongly deemed substantially damaged, residents who are scared, residents who don't know the ins and outs of option one and two. There are many people like this who are afraid, and they believe that they must tear down their home or sell it. I've heard it said, residents want their substantial damage letters. I've heard that from the staff many times, and I want to say to please don't confuse that with residents wanting option one. Residents have been asking for their letters, because they've been told that's their only path to getting a permit. Everyone wanted their letters, because that was our only choice, so we thought, until we learned about option two. For those few residents that want to have their substantial damage letters for insurance purposes, let them have it. But to use this as an excuse to put the rest of the residents through hell, really, many of them are our most vulnerable residents as well, it's unconscionable. There should only be one answer to what's happening right now, and that is, the city of Treasure Island is now following FEMA option two as written, meaning we can ignore any substantial damage letters, and permits will be granted, provided they are under 50% of your structural value. Additionally, the city should mail a letter to every single resident to let them know that they can ignore the substantial damage letters, and the 50% will be determined by their permit cost. Tell them the next steps to come apply for a permit. Offer help to seniors who need it. This needs to be done for residents, as not everyone is on social media or attending these meetings. The only people who know who have received substantial damage letters is the city of Treasure Island. I've gotten a lot of people reaching out to me, but there's plenty other that I don't know, and no one knows them, and they're afraid and alone in their homes. And I think the residents of Treasure Island, we all deserve to hear a commitment from the city that you guys will do this, that you will contact these residents, let them know that we're doing option two. And I also want to add that I think there should be a meeting with everyone on the city staff, even volunteers, so when residents are coming down to get information, they're all being told the accurate and same correct information. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Orns, District 2, Isle of Palms. I wanted to bring it into a real estate perspective. I know Barb was talking about a little bit of the emotional component of the real estate perspective. I wanted to say, talk about the financial part of it. And what we're doing here by continuing this process and stringing it out, the frustration of our residents, you can hear them, it's so loud right now. And it's, it's just palpable. You could feel it. And what is happening by not knowing our commissioners and our staff, not having the correct information, and disseminating the correct information to these, the residents, it's causing them to be confused, then get scared, because there are some scare tactics out there as well. So, and then hold off on getting permits, or even contractors. Contractors are leaving, by the way. They're just saying, hey, I don't want to be here anymore, because I need to go with theirs work. So they're canceling their contract, and they have to go get another contractor, win another bid from another one. And so what this is causing them to do is just say, at one point, get so emotional, emotionally distraught, that they're just throwing up their hands and saying, I'm just going to sell. So here's what's happening on the real estate side. The market is having a greater supply now. In October, in 33706, there were only eight listings. In November, there were like 21, these are all waterfront homes. Now, there's over 22 listings in December. So, and then it's going to continue to rise and rise. So what happens when supply goes up? Demand goes down, and these homes are now sitting. So then the value goes down when they're sitting, and they're getting devalued. We're affecting the financial future of our residents. This is the most expensive asset of anyone's life, unless you're Warren Buffett, of course, but this is for most of us, our most expensive asset. We determined, and we depended on our nest egg, our home, to be the one thing that would give us enough money to go through retirement. Right? We need to do something to help these folks, and we can't be taking all of this time. As we're taking this time, supply goes up, and the prices go down. We're hurting our residents financially, at their bank account. Please, care about these people, as Barb said, too. Help them. Get the data straight. They need just data that is just disseminated in such a clear way, bullet points. Here's what you do, here's what you do. You don't need a substantial damage letter, and if you do get one, I just talked to somebody today, their substantial damage letter is 53%. 53%. I asked her, is she going to stay? She said yes. And I'm like, thank God. I'm the realtor who's telling everybody not to sell. I love where I live. This is beautiful. This is the lifestyle that people want. We have BlackRock that just bought two properties in Isle of Palms. Do we want BlackRock taking over our community? I don't think so. Help us.
Tracy Clark?
Hi, I'm Tracy Clark, District 2, Isle of Palms. I'm tall, so sorry. I would just like to just say, for just common sense sake, how many of us would buy a new home and do our inspection from the street? We wouldn't. We wouldn't rely on someone's information when we're buying a new property, on whether it's a good investment or a safe investment for our families, from inspectors that are telling us from the road, what's wrong with the house. It's just not possible, it just doesn't make any common sense. We're basically waiting to start our lives based on letters that are purely based on assumptions. None of us live our lives based on assumptions, we live our lives based on facts. And with that said, you know, I just think you really need to think long and hard about that. It's really a crazy thing to think that people are sitting, and people aren't in their homes over these letters that are made... over these letters that are made from the road. No one knows what's actually even going on inside any of these homes. They're just guessing, based on water lines, what's going on. And also, would like to say, the threat or the concern about a FEMA audit, I believe it's true that the FEMA, FEMA will come and audit any permit that is ever placed in a flood zone. So if they're going to audit us anyway, why are we not giving them real data from inside the homes? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tracy. Andy Basie?
Good evening. The community development director said earlier the priority was following the FEMA guidelines. That's wrong. The priority is getting the residents back in their homes. That's what we've been saying now for 98 days. Instead of getting back in the homes, we're getting these sort of vague scare tactics. Ooh, FEMA's coming in. Okay. Well, maybe it's snowing in DC and they want to come to Florida for a trip, because nobody's told us where's the notification language of what FEMA's coming for and what do they want, first. Secondly, why hasn't it been presented here? And lastly, if you've had it, how did you push back on it? Because I would expect that all of you, on behalf of us, the residents, if FEMA said, "Well, we're coming in because you're doing this," that there'd be a huge pushback to it, and you'd want to deliver that information to us, that you're advocating on our behalf. Same with the Florida DEM. Okay, so they have questions because they read an article. Well, we don't know that the people who are reading the articles aren't some kind of environmental justice warrior that completely objects to people renovating and rebuilding homes on the coast, and so therefore, they have a vested interest in seeing our option fail. Who has vetted this? Who's asked for this? These are the first questions you should ask when another government agency comes back into your neighborhood, if your priority is advocating for the residents. Okay? So, and now you're saying that option two, which we've all fought for, we've put out there, if we go back to October 1st, we had a different mayor, we had, we had a public works person who's not here anymore, we got a community development director, apparently, who's leaving, and we had, we had this effort to bring back the dreaded Elevate TI, which will all be here on Tuesday, taking up again, because in spite of killing it, you want to bring back Terrain Modification Manual again. So we'll all come back in, and we'll, we'll have to hash it out again, because you can't follow a simple directive that this commission gave to have an alternative engineering company come up with a simple fill ordinance and put it up there. Instead, you'd rather delay, you claim, "I can't find the person in touch at the engineering firm who could expedite the study." Well, guess what? If somebody called my firm, and they didn't, they were looking to do work, and nobody told me, and nobody got back, that firm would be gone. Maybe because that firm's had a five-year contract that automatically got renewed for two years because nobody was, had enough energy to go out and rebid all the on-call engineering contracts, you might have gotten a better response. This is just basic blocking and tackling on behalf of us, the residents. And we're the ones up here pushing for this, pushing through the previous mayor, pushing through FEMA and everybody else. We expect you to advocate for us, all across the board. This is getting residents back in their homes. This option two is a simple process. Number one, do the math. Get the permit, divide the cost of repair by the appraisal, get it under 50%, and get the permit approved. Triage the permit. If the permits are coming in, and they're 10, 15, 25, 30%, get those. This first in, first out, whoever first came up with that should be in charge of a new community garden at Treasure Bay, where all they do is come back and report on who's growing tomatoes, or peppers, or corn out there. Because it makes no sense, when you're all trying to get back in your house, to put everybody in a first-in, first-out order. And if you need substantial damage letters, God forbid you need one, because everybody's talked about that tonight, and how erroneous the information is, you can't even get the backup. People are embarrassed to turn it back to the residents. That's another issue. If they want a letter, give them a letter. If they can go to their insurance company and get 250, God bless them and let them do it. But don't come here and say, "Oh, I can't put the letter out because option two doesn't say that." That's not what we're all here. Advocate for the residents. You need a letter? Give them a letter. You don't need a letter? Get out of the way, and let us process our permits. Lastly, use the resources that this commission has provided. The staff was directed to execute a long-term contract and lock in the program manager 30 days ago, and the purpose of the 30-day option was not to test it out, it was to use the time to negotiate terms and conditions on a long-term contract, so the commissioners could provide the staff, the head count, to process through all these permits we're all waiting for. And that hasn't happened. I don't understand what is going on back here. Somebody should ask. But that contract was directed by this commission to be a long-term contract, get it done. It hasn't been done. Please advocate for the residents as the first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Kramer?
Crystal, I live at 11165 Fifth Street East, Isle of Palm. My mother-in-law is, we were number two at that house, so this house has been the same forever. And I really didn't understand and know what was going on until today. I work with the elderly, so I have a very major heart with the elderly. Heck, a lot of you could end up being my patients. Anyway, think of that. Anyway, I've been in the neighborhood, the elderly have come out, and they're scared. And I mean, I have a heart for these people, and they're scared of, they're scared of you guys, they're scared of this town, they don't know what to do. I mean, it's sad and it's horrible to watch. I've been watching it. I didn't get my letter until today. Today, I got my letter, and I read it, and I, first of all, grammatically, y'all need to really work on this. A second paragraph is one long run nonsense. Oh, that's just, that's the English teacher in me. Anyway, so today, I got the letter, and I looked at it, and I'm living in my home, I live on a crawl space. I am living in my home with my elderly Parkinson's husband and my 103-year-old mother-in-law, who was around for this place, who has seen it all. So I'm getting this letter, and I'm thinking, "I've been substantially damaged, and everything's working. I have no damage. But yet, y'all are threatening me, that I have to build up, I have to, I have to do one of these four things. I can't even contact you people because I have no damage. I can't get a permit." So that's the first thing that's bugging me. Second thing is, here, let me find my notes here. Second thing is permits. I keep hearing about charging people now for, are we charging people for permits? Are you guys?
Why?
If you want to charge me, you should charge me, because I have no damage, and I can come back in here and charge me. But everybody that's been damaged, you're charging them for permits? What is wrong with you guys? That's wrong. That's, that's not ethical. That's, that's morally corrupt. That really bothers me. And FEMA, I used to be in banking back in Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, many, many years ago. Y'all need to fear FEMA, because you think that you're going to use FEMA to scare everybody behind me? Let me tell you something, when they come in, and they start looking at things, and they start running their data, and they start pulling things, you guys are going to be the one getting in trouble for this. So this substantially damaged letter, I have no damage. You guys are going to have to answer for this. Think about that. Y'all are setting yourselves up for, I mean, even while I've been here, y'all are setting yourselves up for lawsuits. I mean, it's kind of sad. I'm, I'm watching it. I've seen a lot of lawsuits in my life, and I've seen a lot of lawsuits with elderly. I've seen, y'all are seriously hurting elderly people. What you're doing to them, displacing the elderly, they will either die faster, which I think somebody's already said that has happened. I've got a husband with Parkinson's. Thank God my house wasn't damaged. I can't imagine having to relocate him. And then a 103-year-old mother? I mean, y'all are trying to kill people, and you don't even realize you're trying to kill people. So that's all I'm going to say. But please, get your crap together.
I'm going to call Joanna Ellen-Family. I believe she's outside in the lobby. And Tony Johnson. Tony, if you'd come up, thank you.
Okay, well, the law's been said that I came to say, so I don't need to repeat it, and I'll try to make my remarks short, but we all recognize by now, I think, that that option-one thing in these inspections was a complete train wreck. We have some residue of that left with the reports that have come in. I guess they're still coming in. I think I heard 98, 97, something percent, but they're not, they're not all done yet, and it's, what, over three months later? And like all the people before me, I've heard stories about, for instance, a house that had a finding of 58% damage and had no water in it whatsoever. Let me ask you this, what does that homeowner do? Because they don't need a permit, but they've gotten a letter saying you need to tear your house down, well, you know, one of the four standard things. And their title is now diminished, I suggest to you, because they have, they have an official finding of substantial damage to their home. It's not accurate, but it's on the record. Now, I don't know if that finds its way into the title, the record, that at some point in time, when they go to sell that house, there's going to, that's going to be a problem. And, and so what do you tell that person? Well, you could say you could appeal it, and they could, but why should they have to do that? They, you know, they did nothing wrong. You've just diminished the value of their house. That was kind of absurd finding. But a couple of other things. The, just, this is a little bit of an aside, but I noted in the ordinance, one of your ordinance is, it says that you, if you act as your own contractor, then you are prohibited from selling or leasing your property for a year. Well, that might make sense if you're renovating your property for your gain, or you're a flipper or something, but I suggest that, that shouldn't apply to damage situations. We, a lot of us don't have any choice about whether or not to use a contractor, because we can't find one. Anyway, but it's a rebuttable presumption under the, under the ordinance, but I just thought I'd mention that as something you might want to consider about waiving that for the, for these damage situations. But now on to the, the situation involving the, the information, the reports from Title Basin that were produced by the inspections pursuant to option one, and the letters. I don't know if you'd need to write a letter, but I think that, that those records, I'm pretty sure are a public record under Chapter 119. And I requested one of those records last week, and I got an email back that said, "Well, we can't give that to you." And I said, "Well, why not? Well, you got to get an affidavit from the owner of that property that says it's okay to give it to you." I don't think that's, I think it's a public record. I think anybody could have. And I said, "Well, if you think that there's a," I said, "Why not, why can't you give that to me and delete the name?" "Oh, we're not sure we can do that, because there's other personal, personal identification information." I said, "Well, just redact that, and just send me the report without that personal information." "Well, we're not sure we can do that." I didn't get to the printer being broken yet. Right? But the, my reading of that statute 119, Chapter 119, gives the city five days to respond to a request for public record. If the printer's not broken in, or not fixed in five days, I'm going to have to sue the city. All right? So I wish you'd just go ahead and give us those records, because we're going to get them anyway, and you're going to end up paying attorney's fees for those people that, that have to take that path. And I would suggest to anybody that has a substantial damage determination that you contact the city, make a public records request for that, not just their letter, but the five-page. We didn't, I hope we can clear this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna?
My name is Joanna. I am fourth generation here. I'm the only grown adult child of my parents, who are both in their 80s, and they have been displaced. They lived in their home for three decades. They purchased in 1985. I'm not really sure what I want to say. I'm generally very well-informed. I've had quite a varied professional background, and part of it includes running a nonprofit corporation. You want to talk about scary late nights when you're beholden to the IRS? I think you should try that out. But one thing that I notice is that people are generally uninformed, and they're not always informing themselves, and now here we are. So I think it's important that people understand that the city of Treasure Island is a municipal corporation, which is a person entity. And so people get angry, and they think they should be protected, because they're property-owning residents here, and they make the payments, and they pay the salaries and everything, and yet, they don't realize that there is a beholdenness to the corporation. So I think you need to be more transparent and explain that to people, especially the city attorney. Also, I grew up with free-to-be-you-and-me, right? And there's a line, "Some kind, some kind of help is the kind of help that helping's all about, and some kind of help is the kind of help we all can do without." My, we got our letter. My mother looked at that letter, and, you know, her favorite thing to say, she calls everything the computer, the computer. And her mantra is, she never goes on the computer. That means the internet, everything. She, she has a master's degree. My mom is a Vietnam Vet combat nurse with a master's degree, and she can't even make sense of that letter. My stepfather has kind of been broken mentally over this, and they are displaced. We've lived in four different places, including a roadway inn in Tampa, because we have a cat. And it's crazy. My parents need that equity in the home. It's likely that they're not going to stay here. There's a number of reasons. And part of it is because frankly, the city has become hostile to my parents. And I'm going to say something out loud, because they'll probably never watch this. My parents have been identified as having the hoarder house. Now, let me tell you something. They were older, and they collected, and they collected, and they collected, and they had layers and layers of stuff. But it's not like those shows that you see on TV. And they got old. They got old, and they just couldn't handle it. And you, you need to be doing better. You really need to be getting to know people, and not in a threatening way. I watched the whole Elevate TI thing, and what I realized about that was, there was, you didn't even tell people it was coming, you know? And you, you should have been talking to people about it, and sharing, like a stakeholder thing. Everybody here is a stakeholder in this city, whether, you know, whether they're paying your salaries or not. And you should have been really reaching out, and this, you know, people talk about this community, but I've been coming here for half my life. Generally, I live out of state. It's very fortunate that I was here with my parents when this happened. I, my body is covered in bruises. You can't see it, from constant having to do stuff, and clear out the house, and move stuff, and everything like that, and I'm all they have. And there are a lot of older people like that. I, I don't even know how the older people that don't have someone like me, a daughter, a son. I, I just, you know, you really need to do better with people, and you really need to let everybody in this room know what they're dealing with. And what they're dealing with is a corporate entity, and you need to explain that to people. I went to that FEMA meeting at St. Pete Beach, and I was shocked that people were so ignorant of what even their local laws say, that the FEMA woman had to tell them to go to MuniCode to look up your local laws. So, really, you just need to do better. And I want to thank everybody here that goes on Facebook and talks about this stuff, because you have been a lifeline, and I am so grateful to every one of you. I kind of move around, I stay under the radar a lot, because in my other life, I'm kind of advocating for... But, I just love one of your comments, Wes Evans, so you can see me. So, you know, share them with each other, talk to each other, talk to everybody, and give people the kind of help they need, not the kind of help that you think they should have, and give it to them how they need it. Don't threaten to remove them from their homes. Don't threaten to cart them away. These things kind of happened to my parents also, and, you know, makes you reasonably and appropriately angry, and it's okay to express that. And you should allow that in these meetings, too. And F U C K, frankly, is a First Amendment right. The case law in Florida is very strong around that. I also have a legal background.
Thank you.
Arthur Sazan. Good evening. Arthur Sazan, unopposed candidate for Commissioner in District 3. My substantial damage letter is actually the opposite of what I've been hearing today at 60 Dolphin Drive. My home is 4% damage, using the inaccurate estimator tool. My structural value according to Pennell's County Property Appraisers is $1,237,586, and repairs and improvements cannot exceed $618,792. This is inaccurate determination that is estimated for my damage to be $49,503. This determination was made without entering my home to see exactly what has been compromised by the flooding. A quote to repair by a general contractor came to $3,550 for labor and only less than $1,000 of material. That would really be all that needs to be repaired in my entry foyer in my garage to go up to the living area. So, an accurate substantial damage percentage would be less than 1%. To be more accurate, it's 8,000th of a percent, like .008%, right? But, of course, the substantial damage letter I got says that it's $49,000, and I could get it done for $5,000. So, that's the other aspect of these odd letters. What really needs to be discussed by the commission is the long-term effects of how these inaccurate substantial damage letters are gonna impact selling our homes in the future. Will I have to add this letter to my seller disclosure when I sell my house? All the wrong questions are being discussed by the commission, in my opinion. So, but thank you for all your hard work and your time and your dedication, and let's get residents back into their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Berkowitz.
Good evening. I live on 90th Avenue in District 4. I, excuse me, two things to say. One of them is on point of this meeting, and the other is not. First, there have been plenty of people who have dreading getting a substantial damage letter. Our home was a two-story home, and we received an insurance settlement, which was only about a sixth of the value of the structure. So, if we were to get a substantial damage letter, we would assume that we would not be. But our next-door neighbors, who were out of the state at the moment, want a substantial damage letter, because they have two small cottages on their property, and they were both wiped out. And they would like a substantial damage letter, saying that they are wiped out, so that they can build a single larger structure, which would have been rather difficult for them to obtain a building permit for otherwise. And so, I'm here to say that if people want a substantial damage letter, they should not have to have a permit in hand or in process to get one, and I don't see why that's so difficult. Also, Brother makes a nice laser printer for about $150, and I will buy you one if it comes to that. The other thing I would like to speak about is, we had an adventure with an unlicensed contractor who claimed he was licensed, and as a result, we ended up coming down to City Hall to apply for a demolition permit for ourselves. And we had put our house into an LLC in November, and we're told we couldn't get a permit, because we had transferred our home to an LLC. We were here today, we were told we could. We would greatly appreciate it if the people who were here actually knew, could actually help us and tell us what's going on. We'd been presented with two different sets of documents to fill out, and one of them today. And, you know, I have a legal background, and what I can tell you is, if I find this confusing and impenetrable, I'm sure other people do as well. The set of documents, the permit application that I was presented with today, has an affidavit from the owner saying that you have less than substantial damage. If I could, if I had that letter in hand, I'd feel a lot better about filling out an application and signing an affidavit that said, "I don't have substantial damage." To the best of my belief, I don't, but I'd feel a lot better having that letter in hand. On 90th Avenue where we live, this is the other thing that I... My wife Andrea and I have gone online, and we've looked at to see who has permits, either in process or obtained, because it's publicly available. On our street today, for the last week, we've had this one house down at the end of the street, where a U-Haul truck comes in every day and is delivering building materials, and there are people in the house. We know they don't have a permit, and they're working there. And on the corner of 90th and Harrell, there's a huge dumpster and a trailer, and the house is being completely renovated. And if the city's website is accurate, there's been no application for a permit there either. We're trying to follow the rules, and frankly, we're kind of put out and annoyed that there are so many people who aren't. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Bazo.
Evening, Robert Bazo, District 1. Again, thank you for this meeting. I think it's well-timed and very needed. It's like deja vu all over again. We've been having these discussions, and the points here have been made really since October, and they were all spot-on, and people are more intelligent perhaps than me. I'm just a humble retired naval officer, but I think I'm the only one in this room who's also a retired federal EOC director. And I think you guys, everybody here works real hard, and not being negative, but I think many people here on the staff just didn't read the FEMA regulations correctly and misunderstood them. And again, the word EOC is Emergency Operations Director. I was the director of Health and Human Services. The key word is emergency. I just don't give a sense that we have that sense here in this building since the first hurricane, that we are, in fact, in an emergency. It's now 9/11. Walking through the neighborhood, it's just really sad here, and to see the impact on our community is just really, really makes me sad. Again, I'm a humble military guy, like the city manager. I'm very black and white. It's understand direction. Option 2 was real clear on November 1st. Very clear. I understood that as a mere citizen. Some of us are military people. It was clear to me that the direction was Option 2, November 1st. Not happening. Again, because of lack of experience, I think there's this fear and lack of working with federal government. It's a fear of FEMA. FEMA is actually our partner. They're not to be feared. They want to give us resources. Again, I was a federal emergency EOC director. Third week after disaster, I would have enacted the Emergency Assistance Compact. I would have had this room filled with Florida DM employees. There's lots of other counties there with permanent people. I'd have a room, and it's all paid for, with other county employees. I don't see that here. We talked a long time about our city workers overworked, understaffed. I get that. Everybody has great intentions. I understand we have maybe 10 Florida State people. Could have had 30, could have had 40. That's based on my experience. I'm not just saying that as just a citizen. FEMA is not to be feared. They do offer a lot of resources under Section 1206 in the Office of Mitigation. Big issue here is market value. A lot of our issues here would have been solved quickly if the county property appraisal page had a FEMA market value that was realistic and correct. Think about it. Most of our homes are two or three times the market value that the county says, putting us under the stress of having to spend $400 to $700 to get a new private appraisal. Think about it. It doesn't make sense. Now, FEMA does allow, besides the county property appraisal and a private, they also allow for local knowledge. We have a real estate agent here. She knows local knowledge. You know that the average price of a home, let's say Al Capri where I live, small house, is about $1.4, $1.5 billion. Take away $900 or so for the land, you have $500,000 approximately for a structure. Easy peasy. Cinnabla homes. I've said in the past, our homes are basically straw. There are some Sunset Beach, but basically cinnabla. We need drywall, and we now need outlets. I think I was the first to use the word triage. I get credit for the word. Give me money. Triage. First thing I would have done, you know, red, yellow, you know, green. If you're a cinnabla house on Al Capri with a structural value of about $500,000 or $600,000, there's no such thing as substantial damage for drywall and outlets. Boom. Green, 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 green. That's not the way it's been done. Our homes are basically in good shape. We need permits, and we could have had a lot more people through the M MAC program in FEMA. Talking in the past with the definition of structural damage, I used the example of definition of pornography. We all know what structural damage is. It's actually, it's actually structural, it's actually determination of structural damage. Drywall and outlets are fine in cinnabla homes. Everybody here is working hard. We're not singling anybody out. It's, we're all one family. Let's work together, one team, one fight. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I butchered your last name. I'm sorry about that.
It's not bad. Pretty close.
I didn't hear anyone else.
No. I said, "Hey, I may have butchered your last name. I apologize for that."
That's okay. My name's Ron DiBazzia. I'm a resident of Treasure Island, and I'd like to thank you, Mayor Dr., for all you've done for the residents of Treasure Island regarding what's going on in our city. Earlier in the meeting, a gentleman, I forget what his name was, and a woman named Barb pointed out the frustration that everyone is going through in Treasure Island. Every day, we are losing thousands of dollars for property we can't use. For example, I got a bill this week for water. Nobody living in the house. I get a bill for water. I get a bill for electric. I get a bill for taxes. I get a bill for insurance. And I'm sure every one of these people out here are wasting money every day that we cannot get a permit to get back into our homes. I'd like to know tonight, other than you, Mayor, who is fighting for the residents of Treasure Island? Is our commission doing anything for us? Is our city manager doing anything? And the last thing I'd like to say is, I want a permit for my property. Who do I go see? And when do I go? And when will I be able to get a permit? These are reasonable questions. So, can anyone answer who, when, who, where, and when I'd be able to do this? Can I get a permit?
No printer.
I mean, pardon me?
No printer, I guess.
I've been here twice myself and couldn't. Well, I don't know, and I'm not saying this to pick on anyone or point anybody out. I don't think this commission knows what they're doing. I don't think the city manager knows what he's doing. I think they should get a whole, set rules. The gentleman earlier in the evening talked about a triage. Now, if someone would come and give me a permit on one of my residences, I could start work on there tomorrow. There was very little, you know, the damage that was done, there was a lot of damage done, but it could be repaired. And I can't do it without a permit. So, is there anybody that can help me out? And these people out here, I'm sure. No? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am now going to close the public comments section and open up the discussion amongst the commissioners.
I'll start out. I didn't call, didn't request for this meeting, but I was glad to see that it was requested, and I'm glad we're here today to talk about this particular slide, and that's people that are requesting the substantial damage determination letters that have not yet gotten them, because on December 17th, the city commission agreed to fully support Option 4, or Option 2, rather, which we had already agreed on before, but we codified it at that time, and we didn't make it, I think, very clear to the city staff what that entailed. And I think answering these two questions can help do that. But I also want to give you a bit more perspective of what I see from my vantage point, and that's, I see a lot of people that do want us to continue to send the substantial damage letters out. I've got several emails I'm gonna read through. I'm not gonna read through all of them, and I'm not gonna read the entire emails, but these are emails that myself and the other commissioners and the mayor have gotten, but these are white people that want the substantial damage determination letters. Don't show up for these meetings. I wish they showed up in the numbers that you all show up. But anyway, here's just a few of them. "I just heard the city is no longer sending out substantial damage letters that they have in queue. The residents of Sunset Beach, myself included, have been waiting three months for this letter." And I'm skipping around. "It's unfair that almost half of Treasure Island residents got the letter and the rest of us do not. Please send my substantial letter as soon as it's available, so that we can decide what to do with our home. If others in the city want to do a manual calculation, let them, but please do not slow down the process any more than you already have." From another resident. "I'm told the city has determined to not send out the substantial damage determination letter to those who haven't received it. Frankly, the logic behind that decision has escaped me. While I very much understand I'm now within my rights to keep or to get my own manual calculation, having the letter would be far more efficient and in a more accurate manner of determining my upper limits than I'm able to invest in my property. Further, I simply can't understand the downside of any of the participants, including the city, to forwarding these letters to property owners." city, to forwarding these letters to property owners." Another one. "I understand the substantial damage will no longer be sent out since I've waited for a few months for the report slash substantial damage letter. Would it be possible to obtain my copy once it becomes available? Whether positive or negative news, it would be of great help." And one last one. "I was informed yesterday the substantial damage determination are no longer sent out. Will you please ask the city to prepare it and send it anyways? Without that letter, FEMA will not process the $30,000 contribution to the project to assist with increased cost of compliance. Quite frankly, I'm, after working on my own permits and helping many neighbors and clients process theirs free of charge, I'm tired of playing these silly games. Just prepare the letter and send it to me." So that's a sampling of some of the letters. In addition to that, I have a, I have a petition here signed by 44 residents. And I'll read to you what the petition says. It says, "A petition to have the original substantial damage letters mailed to my home. I, the undersigned, do hereby request that the substantial damage determination letter be mailed to my house as soon as it is available. I understand that I can have a manual substantial damage determination letter done when and if I apply for a permit, but I would rather see the results of the Title Basin inspection and results shared with me first so that I can decide which course of action I will be pursuing. I certify that I'm a Treasure Island resident and/or property owner or business manager." If you pass those down, I'd appreciate it. So anyway, there's 44 signatures of people who have requested this. Just one, keep one each. I'm sorry? So, anyway, so quite a few people who haven't gotten the substantial damage, quite a few, 44, just that have signed this signature just in the last several days, would like to have the substantial damage determination. And for the life of me, I can't understand why anybody would, would want to deny these people what they want. If you want to do a manual calculation, you can do it. If these people want the substantial damage determination, let them have what they want. Then they can decide what to do. By the way, 66% of the letters that have gone out were determined, were homes determined not substantially damaged. You haven't heard any of those here. So a lot of them do go out as not substantially damaged. These residents want the substantial damage letter, and I think we should give it to them.
First of all, I had asked a question earlier of Catherine, is that are we using the assessment from Title Basin? And do, are we using that information? And she basically said yes, because we have it and we have to use everything that we have. Then it would kind of make sense that we would give them this letter as well. Because they're using it for their, that determination. And then, and they're not being able to receive that information or the follow-up of the four or five pages that built that determination. Very difficult, very difficult to answer on all of our parts of why are we holding it back if they're using it anyhow? They're not using process, option two. They're using everything that's there. So I don't know if there's any real reason to hold back on it, but I would prefer that we just continue to use option two.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting we change option two. I'm just saying when people want their letters, and quite a few people do, like, we have that data, somebody has spent millions of dollars to gather all this information together. These people want their letter. I don't see why or why we should tell them. Let them decide if there's not right. It may not be right for you, but it's, but let them decide. Let them decide.
This is commission time now, please.
Anyway, just, these people want their letters. And why Sunset Beach was left out of the original 900 and some that left, that went out, I don't know. But I think we had one of those 969 were Sunset Beach and the rest weren't. And people want to see their determination letter for various reasons.
Well, I have had the same thing with Palms, that in the 700 block and the 200 block have not even been touched for SD letters. I mean, we, we just, nobody has them. And I have, and I've had a couple of people reach out to me and say, where are they? And where our problem is coming out? And I, I am totally behind the quick math calculation. But that requires you to do, I don't know if this is, I've not counted the pages, but it's one of the constituents that I talked to, 14 pages, to be able, just to get that letter, that you have to file your, for a permit before you can get that letter. They are very upset. Why should I have to do that when other residents got their letters early on and they didn't have to go through that permit process? We're not treating the residents fairly. I think we need, as a city, to be allowing where people can do their permits, let them do their permits, but we need to have a little bit of that option, and I hate saying this, the option one, it says, develop substantial damage determinations in advance of owners submitting applications. So I'm getting, I'm getting the feedback that they don't want to take the time or the cost to get a contractor in order and pay the money to fill out an application without having their substantial damage letter first. They're thinking that, okay, if it comes out and it's really bad, I've just wasted all this money and time and my, the letter that, that the information's been flowing in gradually from these different areas, that they want that. I think we need to come up with a good compromise, that if they come in and they request an SD letter, I think we owe it to them. And it's not to anybody's decision on why they want it or how they're going to use it, but if you're going to treat all the residents fairly, and that's what I want to see, is the fairness of that. I don't think we were, we were wrong in saying, do the simple math calculations. It's not quite that simple. But that was a step in the right direction. But in the same time, then that stopped the SD letters from going out. And that's not fair to those other people.
Thank you.
Well, no, it's not just 44 people, Chris. It's 44 people that I've seen in the last two days, okay? That's, that's.
Please, let's not be talking and yelling out.
Well, likewise, I've had questions about getting their substantial damage letter because they want the letters to come out before they go decide on which pathway to go, if they want to go get a private appraisal and question it. Or if they have minimal damage as they see and it's verified by this letter, then they can go ahead and just pull their permit for that letter and move on. And I thought that's what we agreed on, on November 1st, was to do a hybrid permitting process so that we could get people back into their homes. And that's when I was under the understanding that the letters were going to be finished and sent out as quickly as we can. And then the people that wanted to do their own independent private appraisal could do their option, which was option two. So I thought we were doing a hybrid model to get people back home as quickly as they could. And those that were on the fence had the option of waiting for the letter. I'm not sure where we got off of that kilter of sending them off the letters. My other question, though, I actually have, is what is the valid, how is Title Basin validated? How is that information, before they were hired by the state to come out with their little calculators? How were they validated to be accompanied to do this? And what were their qualifications behind it all? Because that's where I see a lot of the problem, is coming out of Title Basin with false inform, or incorrect data based on the program they're using. Where did that program come from?
Commissioner, I'd have to contact the state and get back with you to get the exact answer on that. I know I did speak to the executive director, Kevin Guthrie, when he was here, about the information coming from Title Basin. And he relayed that we're not the only community that's experiencing inaccuracies and inconsistent data. I think that is, they just hired 50 more people as data inputters because they were finding they were falling too far behind. Because there was approximately 22,000 structures, I think, within Pinellas County that needed to be addressed. I can find out that piece about the validation step, what was used to vet them and why they were hired.
Yeah. That's pretty basic right there. As where's, thank you.
Yeah, there are some particular issues. I'm starting to lose my voice, I think. But there are some particular issues that folks that want to, they know that they want to tear down their home and rebuild. And they're asking for the SDL letters. And that's, and that's all they want. They just want the letter and they just want to be able to move on. Same thing with people that want to raise their homes. They're just looking for the letter so that they can get the $30,000 to help, you know, offset some of that. And they want to move forward. So all they're asking for is the letter. And basically, we would be, it probably would expedite some, some of the permits, the demolition permits for people that just want to knock their home down, and some of those. And once again, somebody addressed it, I think it was Mr. Bazo, you know, that, it really is, needs to be a triage. There needs to be something that says, you know, that if you want to do this to your home, hey, we'll get you the letter. You do what, what you want with it and, and move forward.
Saving the best for last, maybe?
Yeah.
First of all, there've been some comments from the folks in the audience this evening. And I'm just going to comment on those to start with. There was one that said the commission doesn't care. And I could know, I am diametrically opposed to such a comment. If you think we sit up here and we contrive and we go backdoor to try and, and find out ways where we can get, get you, get at you, are you kidding me? That's just ridiculous, in my perspective. And I'd, the floor is mine now, so I'll speak. Second one, we've been accused of killing people. That comment was made also. I have no way, shape, or form, any conception or any desire to kill anybody. That's one of the farthest things, that is a farthest thing from my mind. And I suspect the same holds true for members of this commission. And I suspect the same holds true for city staff. To think that we would deliberately do something to try and kill people, you need to turn another page in your book, because that is just simply not true. Push back from the city to FEMA, that the city should push back harder to FEMA because we're, I don't know, wimpy or something. I would just encourage each of you who have that feeling to take a visit to Fort Myers, in Fort Myers Beach, and ask them what happened to them when they tried to stick it to FEMA. And they got stuck back. And I am no way, shape, or form wanting to see that happen to you folks or to the city in general. And so to think that we can fight the government on FEMA requirements, folks, you need to read the regs again. It's just simply not there. It's nice to stand our ground. It's nice to do the best that we can. And I feel assured that the city will do that. But to think that we're going to fight them and have them agree to what we do on our terms, it just ain't going to happen. It's not the way it works. So there's some other things, but I'm not going to, going to go down there. Arthur Sazan stood up today, and Arthur's going to be taking my seat as District III Commissioner. And it's nice to see a new face and it's nice to see somebody else. And there's going to, also going to be some new folks down at the other end of the table for Deb's spot, Commissioner Thoth's spot. So come January, come February, rather, or March, I should say, there might be some new faces on the commission and we'll see how that goes. But I, I feel very strongly that the commission is here to serve the residents. We're not trying to subvert things. And we ask for your cooperation as well as ours. It's easy to sit out there in the audience and take potshots at us. And we signed up for it. So I'm not, I'm not denying that a bit. But it's not the way to get things done. And the way to get things done is if you're going to take potshots and you're going to make accusations of the commission and the city staff, then come up with a solution. If you think things could be different, come up with a solution. The one thing that's happened in there, and that's Mr. Vassi, who recommended that we contact Jacobs Engineering to get some additional staffing. That's not an open-end contract. And I talked to the city manager today and I said, I would really like to see a cost-benefit analysis done of the Jacobs folks that have been brought on to process permitting, permits. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring on additional staff. Have we really achieved that? Have we really seen a return on the dollars that we're spending? The second part of that is, they want to extend that contract, that this was just sort of an intro, sticking our toes in the water to see how it's working. I would really like to see what I just said, and that is, let's see the cost-benefit analysis of what Jacobs has done before we take that contract any further down the road. And then a question to the city attorney. Is there anything from a legal standpoint that would prohibit the city from sending out the letters of substantial damage that you know of?
Just the letters?
Pardon?
Just the letters or including the data?
Don't just start with just letters.
Just the letters, no?
Okay. No. There's no legal basis for not sending out the letters. Okay, how about the data?
So as a couple people said, in Florida, we have very strict public records law. Every record is a public record and the city has to disclose it unless an exemption or privilege applies. I, myself, have not looked at this data to determine if that's the case. And I haven't had any discussions with city staff regarding it. But I'm going to bring it to the city attorney's attention and ask her if she's looked into it, or if she hasn't to look into it.
Good. If you would, please.
Absolutely.
That would be good. And then report back?
Yeah.
Okay. And then from a city staff standpoint, is there anything that you know of, Chuck, that would prohibit the city from sending out letters? Do we, do we need all the data to send out a letter? Or can the city just, what is the basis for?
The information, the data that we do receive from Title Basin, we can take that and, take, take that information and make substantial damage determination letters, which shows the threshold above or below 50%, and mail those out to people. We do not have all of the data that has been sent to us for every structure within the city. But that data is also available to be pulled from Title Basin. It's just a more laborious process. It takes about an hour, I think, to accomplish one letter, roughly speaking.
Okay. But that's the only thing? We're required to use the information from Title Basin?
Required? We can use the information from Title Basin, yes, it's embedded, it is.
What's the alternative?
Use the other available information that we have, that Director Youngkin talked about earlier, you know, light our information, excuse me, insurance claims, high water marks, you know, that type of information, pictures and such.
So we're looking at subjective information rather than objective?
Correct.
And that's the basis for sending out these letters? Or those are the basis? Thank you.
Chuck, just when we did the Jacobs contract, and we brought them on, I believe, until January 10th or something along those lines, we did contact FDEM, FDEM first and clarified with them that FEMA would be paying the bills for those, correct?
Correct. What we did do is to find out, yes, you are correct, Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if in which category exactly if it falls under, if it was a category B or a Z, I'm not sure.
Yep. And then not to say that we, just because somebody else is paying for it, that we, we would do anything different, even if it was coming out of our money. It needs to, we need to see the productivity. We need to see the analysis and what, if we could even look at it, with our staff, what look at it, with our staff, what could we actually produce, and what do we produce with our staff, the state missions, as well as Jacobs?
Correct, and just to add on, if I could, Mayor, and that goes in a diminishing amount, so if it starts out 100%, I think it was for the first 120 days since the disaster, and then after that, it falls to a 75-25, I may have my dates off there, depending upon the category that it's under.
Okay. And for some of those, some of you out in the audience, when I say "missions," that basically is a request for help. It's kind of a military thing, but it's a request for help, and that's, and we've, so we've done missions before, as well as Jacobs.
Correct, and we do have missions out with the state right now for bringing in additional teams also.
Anyway, I got the sense that the majority of us want those, rest of the substantial damage letters to be sent out as they become available?
I'd agree.
If I could, that would be two.
I agree with having them sent out also. I mean, when we're in here working on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we hear people coming in through the door saying, "I want my SD." I mean, you know, and those may not have been written down on this sheet or even an email, but you come in, and with the volunteers, which Arden and I, and Arden's wife are here, they're here every Tuesday and Thursday, I'm here most Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we really do, we sit with these people, we try to calm them down, and try to really sympathize with them, and where we get the reject letters, for what they have to correct on their permits, we're sitting through that and helping them go all the way through it. Some of the volunteers are even getting in and going now onto Lowe's and Home Depot and getting their carts to try to finish their permits. And when you get into that intense of a volunteer program, it really, it's mind-stressing on some days and stuff, but we have really been trying to reach out and help the community. We just need them to come in to us, because we don't know who's out there that needs the help. But we do really do care, there's not a person up here that doesn't care about it.
And Mayor, if I could, just for clarity, that sounded like, if you go to the questions that are up there, we said yes for number one, and if we go to number two, as we receive more information from Title Basin, you know, I would recommend that we still send out that information in a format, in a letter format, you know, we are officially required to notify everybody of a substantial damage determination, so if we have a process set up to do it, and we can send it out, there is a reassessment piece that is in the letter itself, if somebody does not agree with it, and there's specific instructions on what you can do if you need to do a reassessment. So, I would recommend, but ask the commission, you know, as we receive more information from Title Basin, as it comes in, do we keep sending those letters out?
Since we are required to send to all of these structures, how do we not use that data? I mean, it's, that's a requirement from FEMA, and in our code, from what I understand, and so, if we don't send this letter, what letter would we send, since there is a requirement for all structures to get the letter? To get a, I'm sorry, to get the determination?
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing is, and I've been, as one of the volunteers, I've been specializing, so to speak, in dealing, setting with people who have had substantial damage letters, and helping them, guiding them through the steps that they need to get that. Today, I actually had one that was at 50.1%, it was $634 over the 50%, so, you know, some of these are extremely easy to resolve. I haven't been tracking how many of these people that I've sat down with, but most of these people that were 50, 55%, 60, even 80% damaged, most of those were very likely to be able to get those decisions reversed, and get a substantial damage letter that says they're not substantially damaged.
That shows it's bad data.
66% of the ones went out were not substantially bad, that saves 2,000 people having to come in and apply for a permit to get a substantial damage letter. So, 66% of those letters that are going out prevent people from having to go in here and waste a lot of their time that's unnecessary.
Can I ask one question, though?
Go ahead. I think we're all supportive of the letters continuing to go out.
Does anyone have any, commissioners, do you have any issue, if we would reopen, public comment?
Well, no, personally, I don't, but I would like to see that this culminate in a motion from the commissioner, a second, and a vote on sending out the letters.
Okay, I move to instruct city staff to resume sending substantial damage determined letters out as they become available to us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Does that include the data when available?
When the data when available.
It's enough of the printer.
At this, we have a, we have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
You can open.
Roll call.
Yes, we can open public comment, right?
You can.
Correct. So, I'm just going to go from this way over. So, Peter?
Peter Donatoni.
Please come up here, so everybody can hear it.
Peter Donatoni, team meeting. One thing, regardless of what this decision is, my concern is, people need permits, and now that we're backloading this additional burden on the city or the staff to issue these letters, I heard there are an hour per letter, so it could be, I don't know, looking up here, it's 330 letters, 125, maybe another thousand hours of work. Where are these, where are these people coming from? They're having a hard time getting permits out. So, if you're not going to, if you're going to do this, great, give these guys some staff or resources to do two things at once, which is the letters and the permits, but primarily the permits. Thank you.
Catherine, would you like to address that, please?
I just want to address the time estimate. That time estimate would be, I would say, a half hour rather than an hour, but that is for people who do not have, already have all the data loaded up by Title Basin. These 1,400-plus letters, that's already loaded up. So, that's where we start from scratch, and we just go gather all the data and put it in the tool. So, that is the 44 people, maybe, who aren't in this list already, or that the data's not already in the Title Basin app. So, it's going to not be very many of those that we're going to have to create from scratch, just to clarify that. We estimated today, because we thought this question would come up, how many hours a week of our floodplain managers' time does it take to send out, say, this batch of 125 letters that came in? Estimate is like an hour.
Thank you.
For all of those, they have to be just reviewed for correctness. So, I just wanted to clarify the time.
Thank you. Chris?
So, we had a bunch of residents get up and talk about that these letters are inaccurate. So, I understand that some people want inaccurate letters, but what, I guess, what I'm struggling with now tonight is, we're going to come out of here, of a meeting again, with no answers for people. So, I brought up, I brought up three specific examples when I talked earlier, the people that got a letter that said they're 98% damaged, that have a $55,000, 50% number, and they have a contractor that is giving them an estimate of $40,000 to fix their home. So, what do those people do? They got a letter that said they're 98% damaged. Do they file a permit with their contractor that says it's going to cost $40,000 to fix their house?
Yes.
Okay. What about the people who have no damage, who got letters that said they were 58% or 60% damaged, and they have zero damage?
We'll fix those as well.
How do you, how?
They have to bring it to our attention, and we'll fix them.
Someone will go look at their house and confirm that there's nothing in there? They don't have to file an appeal, you'll just fix it?
They'll have to file an appeal, and it will be fixed.
So, they have to go through the time and expense of doing an appeal when they got a letter that was false?
Well.
Why can't the city make an accommodation, you want to help the residents, say, "The letter was false, you're not damaged." Why do they have to go through some big appeal process? I don't understand.
The city doesn't generate the data. The data's provided to us by Title Basin.
And that's why the letters are all, I mean, they drove down the street, and, I mean.
That's not city staff, Chris.
If mine was a little bit different, I was scared to death that I was going to get a letter that said 98%, so I invited them in my home. They were super-nice people, but the whole thing was a complete, it was hilarious. I mean, they walked in, and they said, "Well, how's your AC?" I said, "It's cool in here, isn't it?" And they, they said, "Oh, good," and marked it down. And they said, "How's your electric?" I said, "You see the TV over there, it's working." "Oh, good." And then they said, "Well, I'm going to mark you as 25% damaged." I said, "Well, did you see I have a second floor?" "Oh, really? Oh, there's stairs, yeah, there are stairs over there." "Oh, I'm going to mark you down as 15." And then I said, "Well, do you realize I actually have a third floor?" He goes, "No, you don't." I said, "Yeah, see those little spiral staircases?" "Oh, I'm going to mark you down as 5% damaged." I mean, these letters are a complete, I mean, they're hilarious, but I mean, if we want to use them, fine, but we got these people that are getting them, and they're all false, and we're giving them no outlet of how to fix it, when they get these bad letters.
We did, we have provided, and that's the appeal, unfortunately. It's the only thing we have. I mean, we get it, you get it, we get it, but Title Basin's the only source that we have that's doing this.
Well, I've always heard that we use some of the Title Basin and some of our own city data, and we meld it all together and come up with this, with this number. That's actually what I believe Catherine said earlier. We don't just use just what Title Basin sent in, we send in our own, we drove, apparently everyone drove around after the storm, looked at letters, so it's this conglomerate of information, but it's producing bad results, so, and then we're putting it on the residents to fix those bad results, and that just seems like an overbearance to me, but that's just my opinion.
How do we, how do we know it's bad data? Wait a minute.
You got no water in your home, and you got a letter saying that you are 58% damaged?
Okay.
That's bad data, right?
Okay, so what do you do about it?
That's my question to you.
That's what I said, you file an appeal. We're not generating the bad data.
Yeah, the city is the one who's sending the letter out.
What are the letter based on?
Supposedly, city data and Title Basin data.
Chris, come on.
I don't, that's the issue. I mean, I don't understand why, if we want to help the residents, why there can't be a process to, when there's a bad letter like this, that let the people, I guess they can file a permit, we said, but if they don't even need a permit, there should be some process, other than some appeal process, to fight a letter that's not even accurate.
What is that process?
I would think, well, that would be something the city could come up, that should be on a flowchart, that should have been developed months ago.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, and we don't have anything like that. We just continue to fly by the seat of our pants, and that's why every meeting we have here just keeps going around in circles and circles and circles.
Wes?
I can't help but feel like everything that everyone said tonight went in one ear and out the other. I don't know what happens when sound waves travel to that wall. It's like me being told by Sarah to do the dishes and laundry, it's like, that's what's happening right there, goes in one ear, out the other. This is unbelievable. If people want the letter, Arden, you go, "You know what? We'll send you the letter." They're requesting the letter, they want the letter, send them the letter. No one here is arguing that you should just stop sending the letter. In fact, what it seems like is people come in, and they say, "Hey, I want the letter." And I don't know if it's the volunteers, the staff, commissioners who are helping, I don't know what's going on, but they have this, "Well, that's too bad, because the mayor wanted option two to happen, so we can't give it to you now." That's what's happening. There's some kind of malicious compliance where you go, "Oh, no, we can't give it to you now, they decided you can't have it." No one said they can't have the letter, it was, the data's there, it's garbage, but if they want it, give it to them. The problem is, you have 80-year-old people living in their Florida room who got these letters that don't know all of this is going on right now. They don't know what option two is, they don't know what option one is, they just know they got a letter that says they're over 50%, and now they don't know what to do. What you need to do is send them a letter and go, this, you don't have to abide by this percentage that you were given in this letter, it's only an option if you want to use it. Which is, actually, I want to back up and say, it's funny that Catherine, when she gets up here, when it's convenient, we're using both option one and option two, it's been our choice if we want to use option one or option two. This whole time, we haven't had a choice, but in hindsight, no, you guys had a choice, you could have used option two all along, if you wanted to, and that's just, that's not, you guys are, you spin it constantly, whatever's supposed to happen, you spin it the other way. I know, I'm sorry, I'm angry right now, I'm rambling, I just want to say, when people come in, 44 people in two days, that signed your petition, you didn't even, you didn't even need them to sign a petition, you needed them to sign a thing that said, "I want my letter," and then you go over and go, "Hey, this person wants their letter, send it to them." Stop scaring our elderly residents by sending them letters that say their house is substantially damaged, if it's not substantially damaged, because they think they have to sell it, they think they have to move out. This is honestly, it comes off like a grimy, snaky, con man real estate agent coming in and trying to trick people into thinking their house is so damaged that they have to leave, so then they sell it to him real cheap. That's what it feels like is happening. I know you guys aren't doing that, you don't mean to, but it comes off that way. Mayor, stick with the option two, keep doing option two, we get the permits through the normal permitting process. If people want a letter, they can request a letter, that's their right, they can get the letter. Sunset Beach is full of people that need the letter, send it to them. No one is arguing against sending them the letter, but don't send it out to Donna, telling her house is 98% damaged, and she's sitting in there scared, thinking she has to tear it down with money she doesn't have. All you're doing is scaring people by sending them that letter. If you are going to send it, it seems like you guys are all just going to vote to, "Oh, let's just send them out to everyone," you need to put a disclaimer that says, "You don't have to tear your house down if you get this letter, there are other options." The other option is to get a contractor to submit an application for a permit. If it comes in under 50%, you can get a permit. These letters, they're getting them in the mail, it says, "You're substantially damaged." They're scared, they don't know what to do, stop doing that to people, you're hurting the citizens, you're hurting the residents. If they want it, give it to them. Did I say it enough times to get it in your ears this time? Thank you.
So, let me ask, let me ask a question, and I don't know who, really, who it's going to, but I asked this earlier, we have a requirement to send everybody a SDL, right?
Yes, there is a requirement. The entire city is in a special flood hazard area, and there's a requirement by FEMA and our codes to provide a substantial damage determination to every parcel within, a substantial damage determination to every structure.
We've been mixing up the letter and determination this whole time.
Okay?
Yes, there is a requirement, Mayor.
Okay. So, could we send out a notice to all of those same structures, all the residents on those structures, and basically say, if you are interested, however we say it, that you can get a letter sent to you? Would that cover what we'd be doing legally?
Could you rephrase that, are you saying, so basically?
I'm saying, send a letter, not the letter, not the determination, when I say the letter, not the determination, but send out something that says, if you want to receive, you know, you can make a request at whatever. Because I agree that we are scaring people when they see this letter and it's when they see this letter and it's substantially damaged, and they were saying it from the city. But can we meet the requirement by doing something other than actually sending the determination saying, "You're 80 percent"?
We have to notify them of the... Of their actual...
Results.
Percent or result. Thank you for the word. And if I could add, and Mayor, you know, what Wes said is probably, you know, true, that people want to know exactly what they can do. And when you get a substantial damage assessment letter, it says in here, "If you do not believe your structure was damaged, you can request a reassessment via email or through the online portal, along with a detailed... Along with more detailed information. Documents that may be needed and can include, but are not limited to, an elevation certificate, photos of the damage from Hurricane Helena Milton, photos of high water lines, a private appraisal, and at least one detailed cost estimate of all repairs necessary to return your structure to pre-storm conditions, even if accomplished under multiple permits. Your request for a damage reassessment must be submitted within 60 days in receipt of this letter. Please remember, you are not alone in this journey. We're here to assist you every step of the way." Excuse me, let me finish, please. "For any questions or concerns, please email, and there's an email address for flood-related questions, permit-related questions, and there's phone numbers also provided."
I just have a simple thought, and that thought is shame on everyone up here. John, you know what's right, and all of you know what's right, and you're all choosing to do the wrong thing. For whatever reason, I don't know what is causing you to choose to do the wrong thing, but you feel it, that it's wrong. Everyone in here feels what you're doing is absolutely wrong to the community. This community has been ripped apart. It's so much worse now. Absolutely worse. You should feel so much shame. You should not be able to sleep at night, especially you. You're a manager. You have no answers. You should feel complete shame.
Could we hear from some of the other residents, please?
Yes. Thank you. Please. Hold on. Tammy?
Hi. Tammy Vasquez, Isle of Capri. If we're going to insist on sending out the letters, which sounds kind of like what everybody's going for, I guess this would probably be more to the city staff, city manager and attorney, is there a way, instead of sending out a separate letter, because the elderly seems to be our most concerned, because the ones that aren't elderly, we pretty much know we can fight it. The elderly seems to be the main concern, and them getting multiple letters and the confusion, is there a way to rewrite the heading of the SD letter if we're going to send it out? This is for informational purposes only. You can, you know, contact whatever if you feel, you know... But some way to let the elderly people know in one letter plainly written, I know it has to be legal, but in common terms, to let them know, hey, they don't know what option two is. You know, I think, again, most of the people that aren't here don't know what option one or option two is. But if there was a way to rewrite it before we start sending them out again, to say, however that needs to say legally, but this is for informational purposes only. If you choose to use this information, in some way do that so that the main citizens that we're concerned about, the elderly, know that, hey, maybe this determination letter isn't... Doesn't mean I have to tear my house down. This means that this is their opinion, and I have it. So if there would be some way in that heading to put that all in one letter that they're going to receive, to me, it seems, one, most efficient, most cost-effective, and the best use of time, to put that all in one letter so that they understand this isn't the final determination. I understand it says everything at the bottom of it, but again, we're dealing with an elderly population. We're not dealing with all the people that are here that know, hey, we can fight this. And that would be, I mean, that's just something, if you guys could look at that, if we're going to send these out, I think there has to be a rewrite. There has to be a way to simplify the verbiage so that these people, our most vulnerable residents that have been here the longest, that they understand... They understand it more clearly where, I mean, heck, I had a house down the street from me that literally sold a year and a half ago for $2 million. House was totally remodeled, concrete block home, and they got an 80 percent determination letter damaged. I mean, it was mind-blowing. And like all, most of the people on my street, it was drywall and cabinets. But they understood, because they're not elderly, that they could fight it. So if we can just figure that out, if we're going to do it, rather than start sending them out tomorrow, if we could look at that, because we can't expect, you know, 80, 90-year-old people to come into the city and request a letter that... They wouldn't even know how to do that. So, and I hate to say that, but we know it to be true, or they're not able to do it. So I think we need to figure out a way to accomplish that all in one letter. That's just my opinion.
I don't remember your name, but you're our local attorney here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Poltrone, Isle of Palms. Commissioner Manning, I appreciate what you said about people coming with solutions and ideas, and that's why I'm emphatic about wanting to come up here, because I believe I have a solution. I have an idea that... And the part of the problem, Mr. Doc, Mayor Doc, you've pointed out, and Mr. Anderson, you said, is we need a substantial determination for all these properties, right?
Yes.
So that's the impetus for wanting to send these letters out, right? But we also have, at current count, 1,500 permits. So my suggestion is that we... Anybody that wants a substantial determination letter, absolutely, by all means, give it to them, especially if one's already been done. If they request one, they come into the office, they call in, they want it mailed, 100 percent, send them the letter, by all means. Beyond that, we should be processing the permits that we have, making the substantial determination, substantial damage determination, based on those permits, as was... As is specified in option two, for those people that have applied for permits, and those letters, substantial determination letters should not be sent out for people that have applied for permits and aren't doing that. Now, once we've gotten through all the permits, I know other people are still waiting to... Are still going to apply for permits. Once we've gone through them, and we've... And the people that have requested their substantial determination, substantial damage determination letters, there's going to be some overlap or some left-out houses that have not gotten anything. And those ones, you could send them for after. But right now, the priority needs to be the permits that are there, the permits that are applied for, get those done. The people that want their letters, get those out. Sending letters for people that don't want them doesn't make sense. And there's a clear option. This option would satisfy everybody's... What everybody wants, and it would make the most sense. We wouldn't have to rely on this substantial damage... We wouldn't have to file appeals. I mean, there's people that are... Have permits that they want to either... They've already applied for, they want to apply for, but if they get this letter, then all of a sudden, they have to go through this appeal process. Doesn't make sense. If you want the letter, you get it. If you, you know, if you have not filed for a permit after a certain time, then send them a letter. But as of right now, get the permits out that we have applied for, send the people letters that want them. Do not send letters for people that don't want them. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Joe. What I would like to do at this point is I would like to table the motion and the second, and we take this up at Tuesday's meeting of next week.
I would like to keep the motion on the table.
Yeah. I would agree with Arden to keep it on there, because we're seeing too much of it, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it actually is, what, we're four days away from Tuesday? And I think that what I just heard Joe talk about does make sense. And what I'd like to do is consult with our legal to see if it... If this would actually satisfy what needs to be done, because I do get it. We don't want to scare people that don't need to be scared. We don't have to hide these if they are asking for them. But, so that's why I'm asking that we table it until Tuesday.
I'd like some legal help here. My understanding is that there's a motion on the table that needs to be addressed.
That's if the motion's on the floor. If it's tabled, the motion will remain until action's taken. It can be tabled until the next meeting, so the motion would still be the same. You would just vote it at the next meeting.
Okay. Who decides when it's going to be voted on?
The commission would. Sorry, my voice, but the commission decides.
We've had a motion and a second, so can we take a vote?
If a vote is called for by the chair, but it can also be tabled if the majority of the commission agrees to table it.
Vote.
May I ask what you would hope to accomplish in the next week, I'll say?
Oh, just what, you know, we've got this requirement, it appears, that we have to give everybody a determination.
Yeah.
And how do we do that? And I think that Joe just pointed out, there are other ways than sending out the letter that we have to all these homes at this point.
Are we required to send a letter?
Yeah.
We have to notify the property. And I know we use... We have to use the US Mail Service in order to provide that notification. I'm not exactly sure. I would say, we have to notify them, and I think it has to be done through the postal service.
Now, can we still call folks up from the...
You haven't closed the public hearing portion, so yes.
So, please. Andy?
All right. So, trying to clarify this, on option two, you have to do a substantial damage determination. And that determination is the permit that you process, and it's the cost of repair divided by appraisal, the math problem is where you refer to it, that takes you under 50 percent. At that point, you've made your compliant with a substantial damage determination. If you choose to put a letter on top of it and say, "See attached," and send it, and you want to call that a substantial damage letter, knock yourself out. But from the point of view of saying, under option two, that you have to send these letters out, that is not accurate. You agree, again, agree, you must do a substantial damage determination. That is not where the substantial damage letter is. Under option one, the letter, when you pick option one, is done by your outside assessment. You do your assessment. It generates this letter that many people are upset about because the letter is highly... The amount in it is highly inaccurate. And because you chose option one, if I get a letter like I did, it's 65 percent, okay, I'm an architect, I build stuff, I know it's wrong, I would have to go through an appeal under option one, which I don't want to do. So to answer your question, Commissioner Manning, under option two, I don't have to go through an appeal, because me not getting a permit approved when I submit under the normal process is no different on this than it would be if I submitted an improvement permit, blue sky, to renovate my kitchen, and somebody in the building department said, "Hey, Andy, nope, we can't approve your permit. We don't like your number. Something's off," whatever. And then I would come back through the city, work with the building department, and I would get to a point where my permit application was approved. So, to the point of the 44 people on the petition, if you want a letter for whatever you want it for, you need it for your insurance. You need it to determine whether you should hire a contractor to fix your work. You would like to frame it and put it on the wall. Whatever purpose it is, absolutely, go send it. But if you get to this motion, I agree with Joe, it should just be amended. You'll send the letter, if it's requested, the substantial damage letter that Tammy's talking about, rewording and everybody's talking about, that's an option one thing. Option two is a substantial damage determination, which is required, which is the math on the permit and the signed permit. That is the determination that the city has made, that you're under 50 percent. So when FEMA looks at it, you don't violate the flood program. You don't mess with your CRS. You don't do all those things that everybody scares you about doing. It's that straightforward. But there's no requirement that that substantial damage letter be sent to everybody under option two. If you want to send them, go ahead. But I think the issue the judge raised, which is, should everybody have all those out on their public record, is one for you to consider and discuss. And I think what Mayor Doc's looking at is, maybe you have to have that discussion with legals and things like that before you get to that. But nobody here, as much as we don't trust those letters, we've proven the data is bad, nobody is saying, therefore, don't send them to people that want them. Nobody's saying that. But to clarify, substantial damage determination under option two is the calculation, and it's the permit package that goes in the file. When FEMA comes into audit, that's what they're going to look at, and you've met the requirement of the determination by doing that.
Chuck, if I may ask, isn't there a requirement of notification?
There is.
So if you don't send a letter, somehow the person needs to be notified.
For any structure, property within the special flood hazard area, there is a requirement for a substantial damage notification to be provided.
Okay.
No, it's not a permit. That is option one, option two, separate. You know, when you have your floodplain ordinances here require it with a permit, but there's a requirement after a natural disaster. Here, for everyone in the special flood hazard area, every structure to be substantially... Or to give a substantial damage determination.
Again, let's get your terminal... Let's agree on terminology here, because this is important, where people are getting hung up. A substantial damage determination is the end of the process where you have met FEMA's requirement to make sure that you're under... To make sure that you're under 50 percent in order for the city to issue the permit and be in compliance with NFIP and everything else. So you said the word notification. So just for semantics, what do you mean by notification? Because that's different than a substantial damage letter that's telling me I'm 65 percent damaged versus a notification to tell me there's been a natural disaster and I'm, you know, subject to something should I come in for a permit. In theory, if my house wasn't damaged, I don't need a permit. In reverse, if I need a permit for anything, I'm coming anyway, because I need a permit. So I'm not getting out of a permit if I don't get a letter, and that. So what do you mean by... I'm just, I'm trying to understand what you mean by notification.
Notification... Let me go back a little bit, because you said below 50 percent. Whether it's above 50 percent or below 50 percent, the notification needs to be made. What I was saying is, previously, the US Postal System was used based upon recommendations from the State Department of Environment...
You mailed them to everybody's houses.
Correct, because it's a trusted system, not email. It is a secure system where individuals can be notified officially of government business. And so that's why it's sent through the US Postal System.
Okay, but what is it? Like when you say it. So the notification is, I'm getting notified of something...
Whether you are substantially damaged or not in relation to the 50 percent FEMA rule.
The thing that FEMA looks for, similar to a blue sky permit, okay? This didn't happen. Every permit that goes through, because we're in a coastal zone, requires a substantial... An improvement determination to make sure we're under the 50 percent before the city issues the permit, so in an audit, the city doesn't get in trouble because it gave a permit over 50 percent, right? That's why you do that on a substantial improvement every day all year. So what is the notification? Again, I'm coming back to semantics are important here. I'm just asking you to take Commissioner Manning's question is, a substantial damage letter under option one that tells me percent damage is not a notification, it's a SDL, and it's done with the estimator tool, and it presents all the issues that are here.
It would be option one or option two. There's a substantial damage determination done in either case.
Agree, 100 percent.
Correct.
But what we're saying is, the STD in option two is the calculation on the permit. When you complete the permit and you determine, you approve the permit, it's because I'm under 50 percent, and that permit with the cost of repair, the county appraisal, and my signature for an affidavit, is what allows you to... When you approve my permit, you've made the determination. Not in option two, you didn't make the determination ahead, because you have to make a determination, I'm under 50 percent. And that goes in a file, and FEMA comes in and audits it.
Or above 50 percent.
Or above, yeah, right. And either I come in, because I say, oh, here's my 70 percent estimate, you know, of my thing, you kick me out of the room.
You started out asking what the notification was, and I was trying to answer that. It is a notification of a letter through the US Postal System to the address on file, to the individual, to let them know where they stand in relation to the 50 percent FEMA rule, whether they are substantially...
That is not required under option two.
Substantially damaged or not.
I'll bet you a beer, show me the written... We always come in here, and we don't get data. We just bring that part for option two, so we can see it, and I will shut up. I know they want me to shut up already, but I'm just saying, and I will stop. Just please bring it, because I'm sitting here talking to everybody, and I- bring it, because I'm sitting here talking to everybody, and under option two, that is not the case. A determin, a substantial damage determination is absolutely 100% required, it's the calculation on the permit, just bring me the written requirement that says there's some notification that goes above it under option two.
You know, I'll just add this, I'm hearing from a lot of people that don't want to come down here and apply for a permit, they want to see what the substantial damage letter says, so they can decide what they want to do with their house. So send them the substantial damage determination letter, and that can help them decide if they want to get, if they want to spend $700 on an appraisal. Send it to them.
Everybody agrees.
Okay.
Okay.
Why, what are we arguing over then? I don't understand.
Send them to a thousand people of permits. What we're arguing over is that people are getting them, first of all, they're wrong, second, we can't get the wrong information, because it's being, being held back from us, and there's a question, which we're asking you to consult with legal on, about whether this becomes part of our public record, that our home was substantially damaged by receiving these letters, and the percentage it was being an inaccurate percentage relative to what it costs to fix it. So that's what the three issues are for the residents. That's all. We're not, none of us are trying to hold back anybody from getting a letter. We are saying those letters are, so you, you go on, the 44 people get the letters, and let's say half of them are damaged, or a third, just to keep with the numbers, they're probably not, most of those are probably not really damaged, but they're going to get a letter and it says it's damaged, I don't know what it accomplished, but they got their request again in their letter.
And the worst case, if they want to stay in their house and they get a substantially damaged letter, they have to do what they have to do in option two, and that's go in, apply for a permit, get a, a private appraisal, that's just, that's everything that you have to do in options.
They have the four things they can do, right? They can do a permit, they can sell, they can elevate.
Right.
Home and elevate, right, all, it's all, it's in the letter.
Yeah.
And appeal.
Again, we're not, all we're doing is saying, make it by request, or, or come up with a process so everybody else doesn't have to get them. And we, the, the reason option two is important is that appeal process is not part, the appeal process in option one is not part of option two. Under option two, it's a re-review of my permit like it would be on any other day.
But the appeal process is getting a private appraisal and getting, turning in your, your permit, your, your, the sum total of all the permits to put your house into the same condi, the same, either way you get it, the, the appeal process is what you do in option two anyway. It's not an extra effort. With, with one step, and that's it. Yeah, I know that, believe me, I've handled 50, over 50 of those. I know what I'm talking about on this.
The process of having a permit rejected and then re-reviewed and approved is something the city does every day of every year as part of its permit.
Right.
You agree with that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and move on.
Thanks for the dialogue, actually.
Thank you.
Chris, come on up.
Evening, Chris Downing, resident Isle of Palms, also on the planning and zoning board in LPA. I just want to caution the commissioners this evening to not take the simple approach here of sending these STL letters out to everyone that you're getting the data for now, because you now have over 1,000 permits. You have over 1,000 permits, I guess, already in the door, not going out yet, but in the door, being applied for, and many of those are going to be accepted, because they'll be under the, you know, substantial damage based on that calculation. But the STL letter that goes out, quite likely, 44, 64% of the time, is going to say that they're over. So now you're going to create more work, because now you, you have someone that has a, a permit, and I'm one of them, in fact. I have a permit that's been accepted. I haven't gotten my STL letter yet. My STL letter could come in the mail next week and say that I'm over 50%, but I already have a, an approved permit. So, Mr. Dickey, you're going to tell me I have to appeal that at that point? Somewhere, we got to get this straightened out.
You wouldn't have gotten the, if the substantial damage...
I agree that we should send these permits out, send letters out to someone who requests it, just as everybody has been saying, how Joe made the suggestion to have it be done that way. I would just caution you not to take the simple approach of sending them all out, because you're going to create more work. I, you know, you're going to have people like me that will have a bad letter, and yet I have a permit.
You actually have the physical permit, Chris?
I've got the permit. I've got an approved permit to repair my home. So I haven't gotten my letter yet from the STL. I'm only one example, and I suspect that we'll have 500 of those examples if you, if tonight you go and vote to send everybody a letter. So that's why I'm cautioning you, maybe Mr. Doctor's approach to slow this down and table it till Tuesday is the, is the right thing to do. I'm not trying to create more work here for everyone.
No, I, I was just trying to make sure that we were talking, that you actually had the physical permit, because on the da, because on the dashboard, it'll say, a permit has gone through, completed the process, and you're like, 5%?
I've got the piece of paper, I got the ticket, but I don't have the letter.
I just want, I just wanted to make sure, because some people think they've got the permit when it says it's gone through the permit process, and then, but then you get a letter that says you have to do corrections.
I'm quite familiar with the process.
Well, and, but not everybody is.
I, I'm just telling you, I am, and I'm telling you, that's the way it is. I just caution, caution you all to take a step back and not make a misstep here, because you're going to cause more work for everyone.
Did you...
The city, and, you know, mainly for the city.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
If you would. In your permit application, you put down the work that you were going to do, you put down the cost...
Correct.
And you signed an affidavit.
That's right.
And so that permit that you submitted got through the review process, said, check, this is good? Isn't that just like this?
That's my substantial damage determination.
Right, yeah.
So, so again, I, you know, and I know everybody's at different places in this, so I just, again, try to keep this simple, as far as, I don't want people to get letters after, I don't want to get a letter after the fact myself, because I don't want to have to appeal that, because there's no guarantee, I'm starting work already, and there's no guarantee if I get that letter, that my appeal will be looked at favorably. I don't trust that. I'd rather know that I've gotten, the building official of Treasure Island has already stamped my permit, that should be it.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Crazy.
I just want to say one thing, talking to a lady here that's going through her substantial damage determination reassessment, as Arden was talking about before, there's several things that Chuck had mentioned that needs to be done. One is an elevation certificate, $300 to $500 for her to pay to have the, have the eleva, she's contacted Pinellas County, they don't have one to come out and do it for free. I just want to make sure, you know, people aren't out there spending hundreds of dollars in an appeal that could be wrong. Why are they being charged money to have to fight something that isn't their fault? If their house wasn't substantially damaged and they get an STL letter that says they're 98% damaged, now they got to pay potentially $500 as part of all these lists of things they have to submit to just get that taken away? Really?
That, that list is, it's not an, it's, they need...
She said she's come back multiple times, and they keep telling her she has to, she has to submit more and more things.
She doesn't need everything on that list. It's a list of things that she can use to appeal the decision, it's not everything that's on that list.
You do not need an elevation certificate.
If she has other documentation, she doesn't need it. So if she has a private appraisal and the...
Includes, but not limited to. So how do you know how many of these things on this list that you need in order to fulfill the requirement?
It depends on, it depends on a lot of things.
Yeah, so then that means, she may need an elevation certificate, is what you're, they're saying.
I haven't, I haven't worked with anybody yet that needed an elevation certificate.
She apparently is at that point, and I just thought it was a little bit unfair that now you've got, the thing is, we got to do a reassessment to, you know, appeal that determination that may not have been correct to begin with, and now that homeowner is out even more money to just fight to have that done. It's not really... There should also be an elevation certificate when you first buy your house. They're asking for another one on this sheet. But I mean, that may be, not everybody filed theirs with the city. I don't know, I'm just saying that's what she said.
Okay, well, you don't know.
Thank you.
One, one last thing, the top of the sheet, option two, the first line, they can notify owners of the requirement to get permits and then wait for property owners to apply for permits and make substantial damage determinations at that time, following their normal permit review procedures. Option two.
All right, now, I'm going to close public, the public hearing part of our meeting, and, and now we'll, we'll come back, and so what I have done is asked to table it until Tuesday's meeting, because I really do need to get with legal counsel to see what we can and can't do. I think that it's the best option at this point, especially at this, now we're going on three hours, and, and then take the vote up on Tuesday.
John?
Yep.
May I at least say, if, if you get to talk to legal counsel, I would like that to be more of a, at least a forum for all of us to ask the questions, not just one-on-one type thing, that we would be able to get legal advice where we can all hear it together.
Okay.
That's why we have to have it here at a meeting.
Right.
So we're aware of the sunshine law.
We could do it at, at the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, legal counsel?
Commissioner Manning.
You think it's a wise move to table this until we get further...
It's not my position to tell you it's a wise move, it's my position to tell me that's something you can do. If we have a motion to table, a second, a majority vote and passes, it can be tabled.
But you're not going to give us a recommendation?
That's, I'm here to give you legal advice, not to advise you on policy.
Okay.
Arden, knowing that we would be able to have open conversation with legal counsel so that we go forward in the best possible way, would you and Bob be willing to withdraw until Tuesday? Your motion?
I think, if, if you're asking if we should take a vote and see how that comes out, I think that would be a better way of getting a, a consensus, one way or the other. If, if three of the five members want to wait till next week, we can do that, if not, I think we should have the vote.
Okay, so do we have, I, do we, we don't do a roll call or anything, we just basically...
It would be a vote for the motion to table.
Yeah.
We, we need the motion, a second for the motion, and then we do a roll call.
So do we have a second for the motion to table?
I don't think we've had a motion.
Yeah. Mayor Doctor can motion.
Yes, I made the motion.
I thought the mayor was... You can, under your rules of procedure, you can.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table until Tuesday? And then roll call, please.
Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Manning?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
No.
Commissioner Toth?
No.
Commissioner Craybell?
Yes.
All right, we've got our decision.
All right, let me make sure that there's nothing else that we need to do this evening? Yes.
Personally, I'm not in favor of kicking cans down the road, which we've been accused of umpteen times, but I think in this case, it warrants the additional input from legal counsel, so that's why I voted the way I did.
Okay, we are now adjourned.
You came here for absolutely...
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Your ass is chewed out.